Is that better Jeff?
Looking great today Wally, looking like a million bucks my man.
You're a little loose with the truth.
All right, good morning everyone. Welcome to the Sweetwater County Board of County Commissioners meeting this Tuesday, June 16th, 2020 at 8:30 a.m. We do have a quorum present and before we say the Pledge of Allegiance, a couple announcements is the public will be able to comment immediately following the public hearing, budget amendment presentations and also during the public comment section of the agenda by calling 307-872-3891 or by sending comments ahead of time via email to With that, I would ask that everyone please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, under one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. First business up is approval of the agenda. Commissioners, I'd like to amend the agenda by adding tab P, which will be a resolution 20-06-gr-01 coronavirus relief grant application and the presenter will be Ms. Marshall, our grants writer. Do US Commissioners have any other agenda items?
Mr. Chairman.
With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve the agenda with the amendment.
So I'm moved to Mr. Chairman.
Got a motion by Commissioner Smith. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shane Field. You were muted. Any further discussion?
Doc, can you hold up a minute? We got a problem.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you. Before we go on, Tim, I'm experiencing some technical difficulty. I can't hear anybody.
Can you hear me Doc?
I hear you Wally.
And I'm not Doc, but I can hear you also Wally.
Can you see me?
Yes.
Absolutely.
That's too bad.
My favorite part of the meeting Wally.
Jeff, would you say something? I can't hear anybody.
Sure, something. I can hear you.
Nothing, I'm just can't hear anybody.
Can you hear me Doc?
No.
Got to turn up the volume Doc.
You're the only one I can see Jeff.
Okay.
I am?
All right, thank you. I'll call this meeting back to order. We close door please. I can now hear everybody. Thank you. I was reading lips and watching actions. So with that, with the agenda approved, we'll move on to our next item on the agenda, which is approval of the minutes from June 2nd, 2020. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman, I've so moved the minutes as presented.
We have a motion by Commissioner Lloyd to approve the minutes. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shane Bill. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you Commissioners. With that, we'll move to tab B, which is acceptance of the bills. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
And we have to physically watch that because it doesn't charge it because it's comp.
Thank you Gene.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve the bills, the EALs, the monthly reports, the abates rebates, and the hospital maintenance expenditures as presented.
Thank you. We have a motion to approve the bills. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you Commissioners. Moving on to tab C is now we'll have public hearing budget amendments and we have four of them this morning. The first one will be SkyWest Airlines and with that, our presenter, Ms. Berry is here. So Ms. Berry, the floor is yours.
Good morning Chairman and Commissioners. We have four budget amendments this morning. The first one is Resolution 20-06-CL-04. This is a budget amendment to increase the expenditures in the general fund for SkyWest Airlines Inc. subsidy in the amount of $58,314 and decrease the general county reserves cash carryover by $58,314. This is due to timing. We're actually, we were billed for five quarters this year instead of four. So I believe we only paid for three quarters last year. So it's just a timing issue. Some money went into cash carryover because we only did pay for three quarters last year and we're paying for five this year. Are there any questions before we have a public hearing on this one?
Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Berry regarding this budget amendment? With no questions, I believe next step Bonnie is to have a public hearing. Open it up.
That's correct.
Okay, at this time I will open the floor up for a public hearing regarding Resolution 20-06-CL-04 for the airport, SkyWest Airlines Inc. subsidy. Public comment is now open. Public comment is now open. Anything Cindy? One more time, floor is open. Comment period is now closed. With that, Commissioners, with no comment, what's your pleasure regarding Resolution
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve Resolution 20-06-CL-04.
Okay Commissioners, we have a motion by Commissioner Smith to approve the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
There's a second from Commissioner Shane Bill. Any further discussion Commissioners? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you. Bonnie, you're up for the next one. Please, Ms. Berry.
The next budget amendment is Resolution 20-06-CL-05. This is a budget amendment to increase the fire marshal operating expenditures in the amount of $16,207 and to decrease the expenditures in the general fund fire marshal payroll in the amount of $16,207. So we are moving money from payroll to operating and this is to cover a bill that was received for it's our share of the cost for the BLM. There was a fire on BLM and private land. So it's our share of the cost. And I believe Mike had sent you an email regarding this, regarding this bill. So if you have any questions, let me know. Otherwise, we can open it up to the public.
Okay, and just comment on that, that was for that current creek fire, our portion of that current creek fire that was last summer. So that's being cleared up. So questions Commissioners? No questions. Okay, at this time, we'll open the floor for public meeting, for public hearing, public comment on Resolution 20-06-CL-05 regarding the fire marshal's transfer of money regarding the current creek fire. Floor is, public comment now open? Public comment is now open? Nothing Tim? Okay. One more time. Comment period is open. Comments now closed. Commissioners, what's your pleasure regarding Resolution 20-06-CL-05?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Shane Bill.
I make a motion to approve Resolution 20-06-CL-05 as presented.
We have a motion to approve as presented. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd. Any further discussion Commissioners? No further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Go ahead, Ms. Berry, next one.
The next budget amendment is Resolution 20-06-CL-06. This budget amendment increases the expenditures in the general fund in Commissioners operating in the amount of $1,000 and decreases the expenditures in the general fund in Commissioners payroll by $1,000. So we're moving $1,000 from the Commissioners payroll into the Commissioners operating. Are there any questions on this one before the public hearing?
Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Berry? With no questions, I will open the floor for a public hearing regarding Resolution 20-06-CL-06, amending the Commissioners budget. Floor is now, public comment is now open. Regarding Resolution 20- public comment is now open for Resolution 20-06-CL-06. Anything Kim? Okay, this time I declare public comment closed. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Lloyd.
I would have moved to approve Resolution 20-06-CL-06 as presented.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Johnson. Any further discussion Commissioners? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have one more, Ms. Berry.
One more. The last one is Resolution 20-06-CL-07. This budget amendment, it amends the entire budget for the hospital, for Memorial Hospital of Sweetwater County. It amends the entire budget by 1,000, or sorry, $1,498,400 to total $91,340,592. This amount does not increase the amount that the county gives to the hospital, but because the hospital is a component unit, the County Commissioners are required to approve the overall expenditure budget of the hospital. So that is why we are having this budget amendment to increase the total expenditure amount. Again, the county is not giving any more money to the hospital for this budget amendment. Are there any questions before we have a public hearing?
Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Berry? Okay, at this time I will open the floor for public hearing regarding Resolution 20-06-CL-07, which amend the hospital budget. Public hearing is now open. Public hearing is now open. Nothing Tim? Here. All right, thank you very much. With no comment, I will close this public hearing. Commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Smith.
I move that we approve Resolution 20-06-CL-07 as presented, a budget amendment for Memorial Hospital of Sweetwater County.
We have a motion by Commissioner Smith to approve the resolution. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion.
I have a second from Commissioner Shane Bill. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Berry.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Good job. Appreciate it. Okay, with that, with the public hearing budget amendments taking place, we are now down to public comments at 8:40. But at this point, I will open the floor for county residents concerned.
Mr. Chairman, I have one email that came in. Email from J. Robb regarding the high school rodeo. He said, "Just the idea of hosting the national high school rodeo is wrong and dangerous at this time. Knowing it's all about the money with no regards to public safety is appalling. As a native of 56 years, I urge you to reconsider." Thank you, Jay.
Thank you. I'm going to presume he meant the rodeo for this year that the events complex put in for because it was canceled elsewhere. And I believe for this year, that rodeo now is in Oklahoma for the high school rodeo. So am I correct, Mr. Lloyd? Commissioner Lloyd has liaisoned on?
Yes.
Thank you.
Amazing how many times you can say yes with a mute button on and it doesn't work.
Yeah, but I'm also reading body language, up and down a head, sideways, mouse moving. So I got you. Yeah, so tell Mr. Robb, thank you. We appreciate his comment and we've got hosting that rodeo this year is not, will not, is not an issue any longer. Okay, any other comments from the public Tim?
There's none that I have, thank you.
Thank you. At this time, I will close the public hearing, or I'm sorry, counter resident concerns and move on to Commissioner comments or reports. And first up, I guess, myself, first of all, good morning again to everybody. Glad everybody's safe and glad everybody's healthy and really appreciate everybody's work, working by Zoom and the work that everybody's doing to keep abreast of what's going on in the county. I, first up, I know I've been doing a lot of the liaison work and through technology and phone conferences and it's going along well and it's amazing how many of our liaisons or boards are still being very cautious about social distancing and following the recommendations at this time and they're still using technology rather than face to face. Also, as all of you had an opportunity to visit with the governor and have dinner with him last week and found the meeting very meaningful. I sensed that the governor did as well, as well as the individuals that were with him and I felt it was a very positive meeting and I think he took everything we had to say when asked for with a great sense of interest and concern. So I'd like to thank everybody for being Commissioners and I'll let you go on deeper if you have anything you want to say about the visit. I would like the Commissioners to start thinking and considering due to the number of things that we're beginning to work with both cities and that through mutual aid and through MOUs and stuff. With also, I think Lauren to help out a little bit, working with the mayors, there's some desire to start having joint meetings with both city councils and expanding so we can have conversations of same interests and that type of thing. So from our mayor and Commissioner meeting, the county, they call it county leadership through chamber, there is that desire that we start on occasions, whatever that amount of time is, I'll continue the conversation, but that we start meeting with them to have common conversations about the things that we work together on, i.e. the joint communications and special purposes. Lauren, when I think about that and they even talk about it, is that conversation to to all of us be on the same page for sixpenny as we move forward and plan together. So there is that desire and I told the mayors that I bring it to you as fellow Commissioners and those meetings can be joint meetings, they can be workshops or whatever, but anyhow that conversation is going on and at some point in time we'll bring that to a point of probably setting up those types of meetings. In your folders are water reports for June from the means protecting the green. You can show snowpack cover. It also talks about the levels of the reservoirs and that. So they're in your file holders in the office. All of us received email from Auto Recyclers, Sally forwarded to and I've talked, you know, I thought first thought this came out of Rob's office because that's where the check was coming from monthly. As I read the report from Auto Recyclers, it was a agreement that was a handshake according to John Levitt, I believe it's Mr. Levitt from Auto Recyclers. And as I read through it and that, or John Leggett, I'm sorry, not Levitt, Leggett. My thinking is if the other Commissioners are supportive of it is having him visit with us at the next meeting regarding the ongoing agreement and give us an opportunity to visit with and find out what's going on and that type of thing. So if there's there's no, there's same talks about it, I'd like to get Mr. Leggett in at the next meeting and have him joined by Zoom or on Zoom and visit him about his concerns with this as well as his dates. Now, when I look at when this started back when, I look at us as Commissioners and Mr. Johnson, do you recall this?
I do recall it. I don't, can't recall the detail of course, and I think it's a good idea to bring him in and bring us all up to speed as to what his recollection is and where we go from here.
Yeah, okay, thank you for that. I, that was one of my main question was because it's been in place so long. You're the only one I could reach out to at this point in time. So we'll get him in next time. So Sally will contact him and put him on on the agenda for the next one. Also, just to let you as Commissioners know that the Wyoming County Commissioner's Association Board Retreat is next week in Hewlett. I'll attend that. I've looked at the agenda, doesn't look too heavy, but I would appreciate it that all Thursday more, more so than either two days. If I see something come up, I may text and ask for some input, that type of thing, or I may call something. But anyhow, I just want you to know what's going on. I will be there. But I would like you to be available if I see something come up and I can touch base with you and and get your input if there's any decisions to be made. But I'm not, that I don't feel is something we're all aware about, aware of.
Doc?
Yes.
Can I ask a question on that? Is that retreat for the Board of Directors and the Executive Committee or just the Executive Committee? Who's in that?
It's the Board of Directors, Board of Directors and Executive Committee, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you.
You bet. So I should clarify that. That's a good question. Okay, so also a fire report from Mike Mornasian. Of course, we had had some small fires and that over the past couple of weeks and, you know, typical three major fires burning in the state of Wyoming. One up by Douglas, it's really huge. In fact, they've, through the MOU, state MOU, they've requested some help. I talked with Mike and verified where we were with support and that. We are going to send the truck up there today, this morning early and with three firefighters to assist with that. He doesn't believe they'll be gone very long and he'll be right back. Also, this last weekend, most of us, I believe it was Saturday, realized that there was a train fire derailment out at the by the airport on that tracks and that entire fire had some explosive train cars on it that did explode. Luckily, nobody was hurt severely. We did have a couple deputies from sheriff's office that received some what's called flash burn and were treated and released, that type of thing. That was a District 1 fire and that. So they, that's their area. We responded as well as BLM and that. So that finished up Sunday. Mike, as we're talking, our fire warden is presently submitting costs for that fire to the BLM and of course, we'll get as usual, as things are figured out, we'll get some reimbursement for that, if not all of it. And then of course, BLM will reimburse us and turn around and bill the railroad for the fire. So that's what occurred over the weekend. Also, heads up, in case you get any calls, I don't think you will, but Barson Eden Waste Open Pit at their landfill is closing on the 19th of this month, which is this week. Will be the last day that the open pit will be open. They will move forward as a full transfer station and that type of thing. They have had a few visits at their board meetings regarding people concerned about the closing, thinking it was an entire waste area closing, including transfer, but that's not the case. And they've extended this closing over two years, three years since I've been working with the waste board, but it's going to come to fruition and that type of thing. They'll have to reclaim that open pit and go and get fill dirt from the feds out there to cover it and get it back up to grade for the reclamation. And now they'll become a full transfer station, which is similar to what we have in Green River, in Fair Oil, as well as in Pine Dale, that type of thing. So with that, that completes my comments. If there's any questions? Thank you. Next up, Commissioner Smith.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I also'd like to take the opportunity to thank Governor Gordon for coming out, spending a couple of days here in our area and having dinner with us, spending a couple of hours with us and allowing us to voice some concerns and have a good dialogue. One of the I'd say is a good listener, one of the issues that I brought up to him on Friday afternoon was resolved. So I was pretty happy about that. It worked out really well. So he can come back anytime and help us with some things. So felt great about that and sure he's a busy man. It was nice that his first trip post COVID was out to us. So a lot of meetings over the last couple of weeks. We'll discuss some ambulance later. We had meetings about our request for information with many different entities and we're grateful for all their work and their efforts into expressing interest and trying to work through that issue that we have that continues to need attention. issue that we have that continues to need attention. The airport board meeting last week was excellent. It was wonderful to finally meet in person. With the lack of traffic through the airport, we actually met in the terminal with the big tables and all spread out social distance, but first meeting that I've been to in months that was actually in person. So it's nice to see people face to face and really did enjoy that. Couple of notes from that meeting, the commemorative air force will still be coming out in July 11th. The C base for the BLM should be, they should have substantial completion of that on July 15th, final completion on August 1st. And Devin does say it's going to take them a little bit of hustle to get to those deadlines, but hopefully that's the case. And then the West Hanger, if you recall, there was some talk about us lending some money for that West Hanger renovation project. And there is no funding needed for that. Devin's taking care of that as well. So kudos to him and and a good job out there as they continue to work through some really difficult times with traffic being way down compared to previous years. So good job to the board out there. Appreciate them as well as Devin. And then hospital board has also been busy. We actually had a special meeting yesterday to talk about SLIP grant funding. Christina is presenting that later on for, not for the hospital, but that's something that the hospital was looking at and discussing yesterday as well. Trying to find some or take advantage of funding that's out there for different projects. So do appreciate them and they also are putting in a lot of hard work and Irene and Tammy and the whole crew over there, as well as the board are doing an excellent job and I appreciate all their work. Again, difficult and troubling times and especially for a hospital and an airport board and they've done wonderful things. So I really do appreciate them. And that's that. That's what I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Smith. Any questions for Commissioner Smith?
Just a comment. I thought that Commissioner Smith did an excellent job of presenting the issue that he's talking about and obviously was very effective because the governor responded to that. I didn't know he was so articulate and obviously would make a very good salesman.
All those aptitude tests you take like high school and college, every time it said I should go into sales and I was like, I don't want to do sales, but that's what it always said. It always said you should go into sales, but nope, I, I like being a commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner Johnson.
Being in the care, long-term care business, it's kind of salesmanship too. So good job. All right. Thank you. With that, next up, Commissioner Shainfield.
Good morning. So like everyone else, I, I do want to say thank you to Governor Gordon for taking the time to sit down and talk to us, not only about the greater Little Mountain area, but he opened the conversation to many different topics. I had the opportunity to talk to him a little bit about broadband, the broadband task force and the broadband council. And I actually have a meeting with governor's office tomorrow to have some further discussion around broadband and what we can do innovatively through the task force and the council. Working together to, you know, solve some problems across the state and of course to cross Sweetwater County. The museum is starting to move into the storage building, the county storage building that Jean has been working on getting cleared out. They're very excited and wanted to say thank you for that. They opened up their doors on Monday to the public and they have some pretty stringent guidelines set up. They're prepared to be safe and to continue to provide our citizens and as well as people traveling through with the opportunity to see the exhibits there. I've had a few broadband task force. Well, we had one broadband task force meeting last week. The first meeting of the task force. I think things are going to change gears just a little bit now that the legislative session is not going to be happening. The potential of that interim has gone away. And so I think that there's going to be some more discussion, but it's going to turn into a longer term discussion as to what can be done. And anybody that works with broadband or connectivity knows that that doesn't happen fast with the permitting and everything else that goes along with that infrastructure. So I think that's a good thing. We had a lot of good conversations around telehealth and education, rights of way and potentially some innovation on using utility poles and things like that to help reach those very rural communities that we have throughout our state. They're actually meeting again today, but I won't be able to be on this meeting, obviously, because I'm here. But I am looking forward to continuing meeting with them. And with that, I think that's all that I have.
Thank you. Questions for Commissioner. Thank you, Mr. Lloyd.
Thank you. I'll just start off like everyone else and thank Governor Gordon for spending a couple of hours with us that evening. Last Thursday, I'm just visiting Sweetwater County and I found the conversation informing and and kind of refreshing. I really felt like Governor Gordon had some really good concepts and was very open to us and and really came in there as much to share his ideas as to hear our ideas. And I find that very refreshing from his position. So want to thank Governor Gordon for checking out our great areas here in Sweetwater County and for his responsiveness to Jeff. That's pretty awesome. So and just for the whole visit. So Lee is on work at the beginning of the month. Obviously, he's a little slower for me, but I had a Starbus meeting and I'm officially passing the torch from Judy Owens to Mary Seppi as Judy is stepping down and retiring. And I just want to publicly just say Judy has done a superb job. Before being a commissioner, I've worked on some grants with Judy through SLIV for transportation for STAR in my own company and have always, and my parts, but clientele I work with have always worked with Starbus for years and Judy has shown great leadership at that position. And I, I know Mary will do a great job, but I just wanted to publicly thank Judy for her awesome work as our, the director of STAR for years. They're continuing to provide services, though the services are abridged. They're doing more of a door-to-door system right now so they can limit and control the number of people on the buses. And having precautions and such to make sure we're safe in this time. And I really think it's great that we're able to continue their service because it really is needed for a lot of people in this community. Also, the library at the beginning of the month on the first, they did go, I think the fourth or whatever, but they have been open to the public. There are some restrictions. They're not doing big programming events and computer time limits and things like that. But the opening is going well and there have been very little to no concerns. They're awaiting a study that actually will tell you how long coronavirus could stay on a book, because that was one of the questions is how do you quarantine a book? So they currently have a book quarantine when they come back in to make sure that they're, they're safe to hand back out. But Jason and his group doing a great job and appreciate everything that they're doing. Outside of that, had meetings with some various department heads and directors. Had a really great, had a really great discussion with Sheriff Grossnickel last week, which was very appreciated, two weeks ago, which was appreciated amongst others. And really kind of an unusually short report for me, but that's what I have if there's no other questions.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. Any questions for Commissioner Lloyd? Not a mission, without any questions, we'll move on to Commissioner Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll start with the Public Works Department report for June 16th. Buildings, the courthouse boiler replacement project is fully underway, as you can hear in the background. The new boilers showed up last week, a little ahead of schedule. And they're being stored by Vons in their maintenance office until they're needed here and then they'll be moved over here to the courthouse. The project should be, take place for the next two to four weeks. Engineering, the Flaming Gorge Road Repair Project was completed two days ahead of schedule. And the road was opened back up to the public on Friday, June 5th. The Bar X Road is complete with the exception of the seating and putting the backing braces on the signs. We will be in a meeting with the contractor this week to go over any punch list items. The 2020 paint striping project and the 2020 long drive reconstruction projects are both under, are both out for bid. I will, Jean will present both the project bids to the board next meeting. We're starting to gather more traffic count data out north of Rock Springs. This will be one of the variables in helping determine what roads need to be looked at more closely for repairs in the future. Road and Bridge, the CMAC and Dust Control Project will both start this week. We will be applying, we will be applying mag chloride somewhere in the county from Monday through Thursday, somewhere for the next two months will be, we can anticipate getting some complaints about that, that project as it, before that mag chloride drives, drives. Parks and Rec, the Trap Club, Trap Club has had three successful shoots over the past two weeks. We continue to run the Trap Club on Wednesday nights and Sundays. The parks are starting to see big attendance bump. So we are continuing our cleaning regime. I just, and there's some photographs that's included in this report and you all have those. And I'd just like to point out that Jean is, Jean and his crew are just continuing to do a job very, very well. And you get public comments because they do see what's happening with those roads and it's a credit to Jean and his crews and also the county. And we appreciate that very much, Jean. Well done. Next, I had a very interesting. I, I wouldn't term it as a complaint, but it was brought to my attention, an issue that I've never had anyone talk to me about. And it has to do with ORV, off-road vehicle issues. And what this constituent said is that anyone using an ORV is paying a fee and those fees are going to Cheyenne and she understands that there's over a million dollars in the, in that fund and it's not being used. And what she is indicating is some of those funds should be coming back to Sweetwater County to maintain those ORV roads. That's important to me because as you know, over the years, I've been very critical of both the BLM and the Forest Service for closing down roads that have been existence over a hundred years and they close them and, and I oppose that. And and in the discussions I've had with both the BLM and the Forest Service that we, the county does not condone or accept the fact that ORVs are out there creating and building new roads. So this is an indication, an, an area where I think that needs to be looked into and I will do that. And I very much appreciate the one of our constituents bringing that to my attention. On Thursday, I'll be meeting with CLG and Kimmer and one of the issues that's going to be discussed is not, not only the Rock Springs RMP, but the Ashley National Force. And as you know, we recently sent a copy of a resolution that we crafted on the Flaming Gorge Recreation Area. And we got a reply from that resolution and other issues, many letters that we've written to the Ashley, on the Ashley National Force. And the reply comes back from Rebecca Hotsi and she's the acting force supervisor and this was dated yesterday. I won't read you the whole thing, but it's in mainly in response to our resolution and I, I appreciate her getting back to us very quickly. And what she says in part of this is, I have directed my forest plan revision team to analyze your comments to assure we've properly addressed each of your comments. In addition, the county commissioners signed the resolution in which the requested stipulations be included in all future draft and final land use plans, appendices and record of decision. I want to assure you, and that's us, the commission, that the stipulation contained in the county's resolution will be considered in the development of plan revision. So it's an issue that I, I think is very important to us all and I appreciate you assisting in, in, in doing that. And, and obviously the fact that it was a resolution coming from all of us was duly noticed and I appreciate that. Let me give this a little thought here. I'm having a little difficulty reading my own writing. I, I'll just jump over to the issue that y'all addressed relative to the governor's visit. I also appreciated the fact that the governor was here. As you know, I've been somewhat vocal that he has not been in Sweetwater County, but he's been here and I think it's very good that he was here and I think it was well, well done. He came to listen and I think he did listen. And the issues that I brought up, of course, were the Greater Little Mountain area, which we have been very vocal on. The Rock Springs RMP and the migration corridors. And one of the issues that I pointed out to the governor on the migration corridors and I I feel strongly about this is that the migration corridor is a mild deer migration corridor and it, it overlooks the fact that there are obstacles that stop the pronghorn antelope from migrating during winter conditions further south. And I continue to point out the fact that that's Highway 28 that's causing that that bottleneck there. The other bottlenecks on the deer are up in Sublet County where you've got the development of housing developments around Pinedale and also Fremont Lake. So I'd all also like you to know that there are further modifications going to be made on the right-of-way fences on 28 that will aid in that migration. But the main point I, I made with the governor is once, once the deer and the antelope get past Highway 28 and get into the red desert, they can go anywhere they want, they want. There's very few fences in the red desert, which is, I, I strongly support. And if they do run into a well location, it's very easy for them to, to move around that. So I and, and they can continue to move freely until they get to the interstate and then there obviously is a bigger problem for them. But at least they're somewhat south when that, when that happens. And and I, I think if the problems with the Highway 28 can be mitigated and, and let them move into the red desert, there's no, no need to call that a migration corridor once they're in, in the red desert. And then the other, one of the other issues that I, I brought up with the governor that I've been very vocal on is the rainy day fund. You know, we've got billions of dollars in, in the rainy day fund and I don't, I cannot believe that things can get any worse than they are relative to the situation in, in the, in the state as, as they are now. And the reply that we got, and it's one of the areas I, I, I don't, I didn't really appreciate his comment. He says, well, they're going to be depleted very, very quickly. Well, that's what they're for. You know, I, I think those funds, the state, in my opinion, has done a very poor job in planning for the fact that now we've got a rainy day and they've done nothing, in my opinion, to cut back the expenses in the, in the state with the reduction of, of non-critical positions like we have done in, in Sweetwater County. And they, we have, we've eliminated and, and appointed this out to the governor over 40 positions without laying anybody off in the county over this recent years. And that has saved the county millions of dollars. And now as we do our budgeting, we're not going to be able, we're not going to be required to, to lay off any, any, any people. And we have laid off. We haven't laid off anyone during that period of time. So I think we, the county, have planned for the future. And I don't think the state has done that as we have done. And the last comment I would, that I did make to, to the governor and his staff and Beth, Beth was there. And she's the one that handles Fenerpa funds for the governor. And I appreciated what she has done to aid primarily the coalition, local governments to do what they do with Fenerpa funding. So most of the, most of the discussion with the governor, I very much appreciate, but it wasn't all a hundred percent as far as I'm concerned. I, I do think something needs to be done with rainy, with rainy day accounts. Not only with, with education, but also those funds that could provide funding for the cities, towns and counties throughout the state of Wyoming. After all, when you, when you look at the cities, towns and counties, you're talking about everyone in the state that the governor and the legislature are responsible to, and they don't seem to understand that. So those are my comments. And if you've got any questions, I mean, I'm going to answer, try to answer.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Questions for Commissioner Johnson? Thank you. Good report from everybody. Thank you very much. Our next agenda item is at 9:40. And it presently is 9:20. So let's take 15 minute break. Come back here at 9:35 and get ready to start with Tab D, which is the discussion of the retention of a Board of Equalization hearing officer. Which is the discussion of the retention of a Board of Equalization Hearing Officer. And that will be Miss Lane. So let's take a fifteen minute break. Thank you. Kim, are we ready?
Yeah.
Okay, oh, there we go. There you go. It's nine thirty-five. I'd like to welcome everybody back from the break and call this meeting back to order. With that, we'll go on with our agenda. And our first agenda. Action item is under Tab D, which is a discussion of the retention of a Board of Equalization Hearing Officer. And I believe that will be with Ms. Lane, our county clerk. Good morning, Ms. Lane.
Good morning, Chairman Commissioners. We, Sweetwater County sent out the notice of valuations from the assessor's office. And we have received forty-five appeals. Mr. Deleon and I have spoke to several attorneys who also act as hearing officers. And after speaking with several of them, Mr. Scott Sergeant out of Kemmer. Appears to be the most aligned with the needs of Sweetwater County. His fee is one hundred and eighty dollars an hour plus expenses. The hearings are tentatively set for September first, second and third. If the commission approves Mr. Sergeant as the hearing officer for Sweetwater County, we would need. A motion to, to set that going forward.
Okay. Any questions for? Ms. Lane or for, I believe John Deleon's on. John?
I am here.
Oh, very good. Thank you. Any questions for them regarding the. Retention of a Board of Equalization Hearing Officer?
I just would like to know what that name was. I didn't get it.
It's Scott Sergeant, S-A-R-G-E-N-T, out of Kemmer.
Scott Sergeant? Okay, very good. Thank you. You had a question?
Yeah, I just, yeah, I did. I guess this question would go to Cindy and John. What, what set him, what set Mr. Sergeant apart from the other people that made you feel he would fit our needs best?
John, do you want to take that one?
Sure. I think that, I think that Cindy probably. Liked the fact that he is the hearing officer for Lincoln County. And that. In terms of providing final paperwork, he has done that in the past. And seems that he would be able to provide. The, the paperwork necessary. Or whatever decision the board makes on each individual hearing as we get to those in September.
Thank you. Thank you, John and Cindy.
Any other questions for Cindy or John?
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Ms. Shane.
My question is for John and Cindy potentially. Who was hearing officer in the past? I guess even the last one and are these rates comparable?
Last year we had Mr. Barton out of Lander. He is actually the one that gave us Mr. Sergeant's number. So. I, I think that he would do it if we were in a pinch, but since he gave us the other name. I did not look at what was last year's cost, but I believe that this one is pretty reasonable.
Thank you. Any other questions, Commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, yeah, go ahead. Mr. Divas, since you're the assessor and this involves you, please?
Yeah, it does involve me. One other comment, just to make, one of our appeals is an industrial appeal and that is represent, the appraiser in that situation is a. TY Pickett, they're, they're the industrial appraisers that we contract with to do some of the bigger facilities. In the county and they have a scheduling conflict with that first week in September. So that. Appeal, if it goes forward, would be scheduled for the following week and I had talked to, I think I reached out to John and Cindy both. And I think we were tentatively scheduling that one for September tenth, which is the Thursday of the following week. I don't have any more information on it at this point. Everything is still kind of up in the air and I'll let you know as soon as I know any. Final dates and times. Our appraiser that did that facility was not available that first week in September, but he was available the following week.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Divas. With Mr. Divas's comment, that brings to mind one that I have is, is these are equalization hearings for both private and the industry? Okay. Three and the rest of private businesses?
Correct. There, there's one industrial facility and the other are all. Commercial, maybe even some oil and gas field equipment, buildings, those kinds of things. But this is the only industrial site that is being appealed.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Any other questions for either Mr. Divas, Ms. Lane, or Mr. Delion? And Commissioners, what's your pleasure regarding retaining Mr. Sergeant as the Board of Equalization Hearing Officer?
Mr. Chairman, I would move that we, we contract with Mr. Scott Sergeant as our. Board of Equalization Hearing Officer as we've discussed.
Okay, we have a motion by Commissioner Lloyd. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shaneville. Any further discussion, Commissioner? No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Looks like we have an equalization officer, Ms. Lane. Next on our agenda under tab E will be compensation for election judges, county counting and canvassing boards. That's tied to resolution two zero dash zero six dash C.L. dash zero eight. Ms. Lane, I believe this is yours as well.
Good morning, Chairman and Commissioners, once again. State statute twenty-two dash eight dash one-one-six provides that judges of elections and members of counting boards. Shall be compensated for their services at the rate that is determined by the county commissioners. I have presented the same rates that we have had in Sweetwater County for the past several elections. They are on the resolution, chief election judges at two hundred and ten dollars. These are all flat rates per election, an election judge at one eighty-five. County board official at one eighty-five, canvassy board members at one eighty-five. Attending the training schools that are mandatory, thirty dollars. And for those who are traveling over five miles, they would receive the current county mileage reimbursement rate. So I'm presenting that before you to. For your approval, if you so desire.
Thank you, Ms. Lane. Commissioners, any questions regarding this resolution?
I have a question, sir.
Commissioner Johnson?
With the juggling of the polling places and the number. It seems to me that possibly we're going to have a need for less. Judges, et cetera. Do you have a feel for that, Cindy?
Yes, we do. Due to the directive, need for judges at each location. Some of our larger areas, we will be hiring upwards ten to twelve judges to be at those locations to help keep everything running smoothly. We are, so far, we've received, when I just checked a little bit ago, a hundred and one. Judges have said that they would be willing to serve on that day. We will, might not sure if all of them will. Be working that day, but will need alternates and in case of sickness or someone changes their mind. So we are, we are doing okay with that. So while we have less places, we do, we are required to have more judges. So hopefully with that, we will be able to keep everything running smoothly.
Thank you, Ms. Lane. Did that answer your question, Commissioner Johnson?
More or less.
More or less. Any other questions for Ms. Lane, Commissioners? Thank you very much. Commissioner, it's your pleasure regarding resolution two zero dash zero six dash C.L. dash zero eight. Which is compensation for election judges, county counting and canvassing boards.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we approve that.
All right, Commissioner Smith, he made motion to approve. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd. Any further discussion, Commissioners? With no further discussion, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Looks like you have your judges. Thank you, Ms. Lane.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good one. All right, up next under tab F. We have Dude Solutions Facility Condition Assessment Contract for fiscal year twenty-one. And I believe to present that today and join us is Mr. Legursky, our Public Works Director. Good morning, Mr. Legursky.
Morning. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What is before you is a contract with Dude Solutions to continue with our facility condition assessment. This is a budgeted item for next year, but without a signed contract. We learned last year that we fall behind the queue by quite a bit. So I'd like to kind of get a jump on this a little bit, if you guys are amenable to it, so we can get in the queue. So they can actually get it done this summer instead of September, October, November last year, like they had done in the past. This is for all buildings that are not really core county buildings. They're the libraries, the main buildings out the Sweetwater complex, southwest counseling buildings, the major ones that they have. And also two leftover buildings for parks and recreation. And that can, should continue the majority of the buildings that we have are underneath this. We all have them in the same system. And we have conditioned assessments on them that we can continue to budget with, we continue to look at and do some capital schedule forecasting. I did budget forty-five thousand in this item underneath professional services in the facility maintenance department. It came at a little under forty-three thousand, just say forty-two eight. So whatever your guys' pleasure is.
Okay, questions for Mr. Legursky, Commissioners? Thank you.
Gene, did you say that it's budgeted in next year's budget, or is it in this year's budget?
It's, it's in twenty-twenty-one. This is for your twenty-twenty-one.
Thank you, Gene. Other questions for Mr. Legursky?
Gene, just a, just a quick question. Just to clarify, when you and I have talked about Dude Solutions and our other buildings, we found it to be really highly efficient and effective, correct?
Yes. We're still struggling, learning it a little bit because I haven't been onsite and given us the. The tutorial that they need to, that's scheduled in August because of the pandemic. They were supposed to be out here in March. But yeah, everything that we've seen and the, the FCAs that they, they've done were very well put together. And they actually put together a thirty-year budget cycle for us on the buildings that they have currently completed.
Me and the guy that loves the strategic planning stuff, I think this is an essential tool for us, for you to be successful in that. So I'm all for it, Gene.
Okay, Commissioners, other questions? Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. Other questions? Commissioner, your pleasure regarding the contract with Dude Solutions in the amount of forty-two thousand eight hundred thirty-six dollars twenty-five cents. And allowing the chairman to sign.
Mr. Chairman?
Johnson?
Make a motion to approve the request in the amount of forty-two thousand eight hundred thirty-six dollars and twenty-five cents. Towards Dude Solutions presentation to us today. And authorize the chairman sign said documents. And any documents that would not require the chairman's, to chairman to sign would be authorized to sign, to be signed by Mr. Legursky.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Shaneville to approve. Any further discussion? With that, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Next up on our agenda, we'll go to tab G. Which is approval of an MOU between the University of Wyoming Survey Analysis Center and Sweetwater County Juvenile Probation. And presenting that today, I believe, is Ms. Kelly. Are you with us, Ms. Kelly?
I am. Good morning.
Good morning.
I am requesting approval for our office to participate in a. Study for recidivism for our precourt diversion program between our department and WISAC. WISAC receives grant funding in order to do this program. Our MOU is required so that we can release information to them so that they can analyze it and hopefully give us some feedback on our program.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Kelly. Any questions for Ms. Kelly regarding the MOU, Commissioner? Any questions? I would ask Commissioner, or excuse me, our deputy attorney, John Delion, do you get a chance to review it?
I did, and it does have the appropriate restrictions in terms of confidentiality of data.
Very good. Thank you. Good point. Alrighty, any, any other questions? And Commissioners, what's your pleasure regarding the MOU between the University of Wyoming Survey and Analysis Center and Sweetwater County Juvenile Probation? And authorizing the chairman to sign?
Mr. Chairman, I would still move.
Okay, we have a motion to approve by Commissioner Lloyd. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shaneville. Any further discussion, Commissioners? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Oppose, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Kelly.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Have a good one. Thanks for joining us.
Thank you.
All right, up next on tab H is a letter regarding Southwest Counseling Service. And here to present that is Ms. Linda Akers, the CEO for Southwest Counseling. Ms. Akers? Good morning.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, it's Laura Schmidt-Pizzato. I'll be doing that in her, in her stead this morning.
Thank you. Well, thanks for joining us, Ms. Pizzato. All right, the floor is yours.
So, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, we are requesting a, a letter that. Will be sent to the state of Wyoming for our contract that states that we are a subdivision of Sweetwater County. It is a, a request from them because we do not have to file a nine ninety form, and so the. Status of our entity becomes a little confusing at the state level, and so we need to be claimed by Sweetwater County. As we have been for the last fifty or sixty years.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Laura. Commissioners, any questions? With no questions, I guess it would be up to the pleasure of the Commissioners in regard signing. And regarding the Commissioners having the chair sign the letter regarding Southwest Counseling Services. What's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Shaneville?
I will make a motion that we approve this letter and authorize the chairman to sign as presented.
Thank you. We have a motion by Commissioner Shaneville. Is there a second?
I will second.
Got a second by Commissioner Lloyd. Commissioners, any further discussion? No further discussion. All in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Post, same sign. Post, same sign. Motion carries. So we have your letter, Ms. Laura.
Thank you, Commissioners.
You're welcome. I believe you are up next with Ms. Marshaw. On approval to sponsor a community prevention grant application. So I welcome Ms. Marshaw. And Laura is your two. Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, Sweetwater County has the opportunity to sponsor an application for community print prevention. Grant funding through the Wyoming Department of Health, their public health division. There is no required cash match, and if approved, the funding would actually be awarded straight to Sweetwater County. And then we would pass it through Southwest Counseling. So this grant is a, is based on having data-driven and evidence-based substance abuse and suicide prevention plans. That positively impacts substance abuse and mental health in our community. For this project, I placed a public notice requesting proposals. It was advertised on May sixth, and it was also placed on the county's website, and. We received a total of one application by Southwest Counseling by the deadline. So the request is going to be four hundred eighty-six thousand four hundred and fifty-eight dollars. All managed by Southwest Counseling, and again, it's to target certain focus areas. Those areas are underage drinking, adult binge drinking, tobacco, opioids and other drugs. Suicide, and then they have a category of multiple, multiple focus areas. So I just want to point out that Southwest Counseling is currently overseeing each community prevention activities in Sweetwater County. They were awarded this funding the last biennium. I do recommend sponsoring the proposal. In your packet, I provided the project proposal, which is actually the work plan being proposed by Southwest Counseling. I would like to have Laura provide some additional insight as the experts overseeing this project to, to talk about this.
Thank you, Christina. Ms. Laura, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. Thank you, Christina, for that great recap of the, of the grant. So there are about six target areas that we are needing to focus on, and what happens is we have to come up with best practices for. Strategically tackling each one of those areas. So, for example, on youth opioid abuse. One of the projects that we are, are going to tackle is, is opioid abuse in athletes. Because as athletes get injured, they tend to use opioids for those injuries, and then that's where addiction can start. So that's one example. Another example would be with retailers of alcohol. Doing different signage and different education for those retailers, doing tips training for people who are serving. Alcohol, alcoholic beverages at events. So you can see through the work plan that there's many, many different strategies that are going into each one of these, and. We really are focusing this year on changing the, the perceptions of the community, especially through media and social media. So getting the word out very rapidly through, through those areas instead of just doing a lot more print ads. So I'm welcome, I'd welcome any questions that anyone would have.
Thank you, Ms. Laura. Questions, Commissioners?
No question, Mr. Chairman, but I'd just like to make a comment, and that's being the liaison of, for Southwest Counseling. I've had the opportunity to listen to our. The, the diversion program department present multiple times and. Have been thoroughly impressed with their work, and really, they did start last year when they got the grant. They had it kind of start a little bit late, so you didn't see a lot of the action happen until the end of the year. But seeing how actively involved and how big they built that coalition to really make a difference across the, across the bounds was really impressive. Last year at the Waco conference, I sat in on the Commission Health and Human Service Committee, and we were talking specifically about this grant. And I just want to say at that time and talking to the other counties, we were significantly, even though as Southwest Counseling, they felt they were a little behind. They were significantly ahead of the curve of the other counties, and I just want to thank them for their work and their diligence to get that going and. Really use that to make a positive impact in multiple programs, and some of the programs may be, but I'm like, one of my favorites was buying the regular-sized drinking cups rather than having the oversized. Cups just to simply push moderation and just in a, in a great educational way. So. I just have nothing but support for this grant and what this group has done, specifically at Southwest Counseling, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. Commissioners, other questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, I'd just like to make a general comment about Southwest Counseling and Linda and Laura, over the years that I've been a commissioner. Year in and year out, the professionalism that comes out of that group is, is admirable in their staff. They do great work. They always have everything in order when they come to us. And I have nothing but the greatest respect for them, and I surely will continue to support them.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Other Commissioners? Well, I would like to echo Commissioner Johnson's, Commissioner Lloyd's same comments regarding what's happened at Southwest Counseling. Laura, a couple of questions I have for, for the. Laura, the couple of questions I have for the, in particular with this grant is, under your focus areas, are there any expected measured outcomes that are required with this grant?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, there, we get to set our own outcomes for the grant. One of the things that we want to do is we want to see a change over time in different data points. For example, on the PNA data, the Prevention Needs Assessment data that's collected from students in the school districts, we want to see a decline in the number of students who are smoking, have started smoking by the, by sixth grade or eighth grade or when they're seniors in high school. So, that's one example. Another one would be alcohol consumption in the last thirty days for those same students. So, we want to keep seeing this decline happen. And we have been seeing some of that decline happen a little bit, and then it spikes again. So, when it's spiking, you want to look at what that is. But overall, it's hard to pinpoint exactly what we're doing and how that impacts the community and how other kinds of environmental changes are happening. So, it's very hard for us to come up with specific outcomes that we can say are driven directly by this prevention coalition.
Very good. Thank you. Because that's, when I look at those focus areas and I think about what it takes to hit those data points when you want to get measured results, they don't come quickly. It's long over, it has to happen over time. But I think what's important is to make sure that for grant purposes, that there are ways that results can be measured and data gathered and that type of thing. One other question I have, well, before the next question, I see Christine. Christine, do you need to add anything regarding a measured data results, that type of thing?
Mr. Chairman, I do not.
Thank you.
But, Mr. Chairman, I would like to add with the COVID-19 impacts, mental health will be significantly impacted. You know, all services, there's a lot of, I guess, almost panic in our community economically, and then, you know, housing, health. But mental health, I think, is often forgotten, and the data I've read, I think Southwest Counseling will have a lot of impact. So, I just wanted to add that.
I fully agree with you, and I think we're just beginning to see the early stages of that. I don't think we won't see, we'll continue to see that grow and become more and more important for support through Southwest. It's the many, many mental support that our people are going to need. My last question is this, is as I listen to our governor's conference two weeks ago, and he's on again this afternoon, and I know COVID's on his list this afternoon, but I kind of would not be surprised to hear him talk about budget. Some of the things I'm seeing and hearing coming down the pike is with some of the grants supporting this Biennium, out of a two-year Biennium, supporting this year, but yet not releasing money for the second year and that type of thing. Are you hearing anything from, through this grant proposal from the undercurrent state level through this of how solid these dollars are going to be in this grant for the next few years? As far as, I know there's funding sources from the federal as well as the state. So, I'm concerned about the state because I know they're looking severely at programs. Federal end of it, I can't get a pulse on that. So, at the state level, what are you sent to with this grant next few years?
So, Mr. Chairman, as we actually discussed yesterday, this grant is comprised of multiple funding sources. There's at least two federal funding sources and then some state. As of today, I have no news on the impacts for this specific program.
Thank you. Appreciate that. All right, I have no more questions. Commissioners, any other questions? What's your pleasure, Commissioners, regarding the approval to sponsor a community prevention grant application and authorizing the grants manager to sign?
Mr. Chairman, that is not a typo.
I know it isn't.
It's a requirement from the state. They don't want your signature.
That's okay. I'm glad to know. Commissioners, your pleasure.
I would show move. Just these docs doesn't have to sign it, and I do think the value of the grant is awesome. So, I would show move as presented.
All right, we have a motion to approve as presented and authorize the grants manager to sign. Is there a second?
I'll second that motion with reservations. Who's signing that?
All right, we have a second by Commissioner Johnson. Any further discussion, Commissioners? No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 I'm here too.
Aye.
There you go. All those opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, thank you, Commissioners. All right, thank you, Ms. Laura. Thanks for joining us. Be safe out there. Keep up the good work. Let the troops know. We appreciate it. Thank you. Okay, next up on our item will be Tab J, which is approval of the fiscal year 2020 Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Grant for Funding Grant Award, and that will be with the Sheriff and Ms. Marshal. So, Sheriff John Grossnickel, welcome, and Ms. Marshal. The floor is yours.
Okay, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, this time, Sweetwater County was awarded fifty-eight thousand, eight dollars in Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding directly from the U.S. Department of Justice. This has not passed through the state. The grant award requires no cash match and expires on January thirty-first, twenty-twenty-one. So, the Department of Justice said its priorities for this funding, and it is to prevent, prepare for, and respond to the coronavirus. The Sheriff's Office would like to use the award towards two very strategically determined priorities. So, the first one is to protect their law enforcement personnel. They would like to buy personal protective equipment, including gas masks and one-hundred filters for every deputy and potentially some expendable gloves, masks, and gowns for the detention center. And then second, they want to increase their community outreach and communication. So, they're proposing to do that in two ways. One is to purchase two portable message boards to communicate urgent messages to the public at different locations. Second, they would like to have their AM radio equipment upgraded to amplify the strength of the radio signal and communicate urgent messages to an extended audience. I believe right now that's more focused in Green River. But I would like to know these purchases or proposed purchases were not included in the sheriff's budget. And if approved, the chairman will need to initial fifteen pages in addition to signing the grant. And the sheriffs here, so Sheriff, would you like to add on to that about the project description?
Good morning, John. Welcome, Sheriff Grossnickel. Good morning.
So, did the sheriff say no?
Or, you're muted, Sheriff. Still can't hear you.
Good morning, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners. I just want to say because of the due diligence of the work that Christina does and the members of our department, we were one of four law enforcement agencies in the state of Wyoming that received this due to the fact that we put in for the burn grant in previous years. During the pandemic, we were able to recognize a few areas of deficiency and put our heads together and came up with the conclusion to use this money to fill those gaps. So, again, I want to say thank you to everybody that was involved.
Thank you, Sheriff. Anything else to add, Christina?
No, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioners, any questions for either the sheriff or Ms. Marshal? With no questions, Commissioners, what's your pleasure with regard to approving the fiscal year 2020 Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Grant Award and authorizing the chairman to sign?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Johnson.
I'd make a motion to approve and authorize the chairman to sign the fiscal year 2020 Coronavirus Emergency Supplemental Funding Grant Award.
Thank you. Mr. Johnson, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shanefield. Any further discussion, Commissioners? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Christina, I'll need a masseuse there to massage my wrist as I do with official stations of initial, please.
Sorry about that.
No, that's okay. All right, thank you. Thank you, Sheriff, for joining us.
Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. You have a great day and stay safe, please. Okay, up next is approval to modify the fiscal year 2021 Victims of Crime Grant Application. And I believe joining us today with Ms. Marshal is our county attorney, Danny Armaspy. And I don't know, Danny, is your deputy Miss Tebow aboard? Nope, I don't see Miss.
No, she's got court. We were tag teaming today, Mr. Chairman, so it'll just be me.
All right, welcome. I'll turn the floor over to Ms. Marshal and our county attorney.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman and Commissioners, I think this is what you, Mr. Chairman, were, was alluding to earlier about cuts in grants and the impacts. And of course, there are going to be a lot of impacts. But we still want to give you the opportunity to decide programs and services you'd like to sustain. And so, want to let you know your options. So, in this case, Sweetwater County had submitted a grant application to the Wyoming Division of Victim Services in the amount of one hundred twelve thousand, one hundred and fifteen dollars to sustain two victim witness coordinator positions in the county attorney's office. In the attorney's office, there are also two permanent employees doing the same services. So, this funding is used to provide important services to victims of crime in the community. They provide support and community referrals. They assist victims with filing compensation. They provide information about cases and court procedures. They accompany witnesses and victims to court. And finally, they act as a liaison with the Criminal Justice Center or system. So, after state review, originally I put in your packet that the preliminary award had been decreased by sixteen thousand, two twenty-one. However, as of yesterday, that, the decrease actually increased unfortunately to eighteen thousand, one hundred and thirty-nine dollars or sixteen point two percent less than the original request. That was following the governor's budget message to the state agencies. So, bottom line is you have a choice of either covering the shortfall, and the department was working hard at finding solutions, looking at decreasing hours. I know you don't want to increase the budget. I have a tiny bit of potential grant match money that could be used as insurance only. However, next year, this is expected to receive additional cuts. If there is no supplement, meaning you just accept the grant and the revised preliminary award of ninety-three thousand, nine hundred and seventy-six dollars, the second employee would have to drop to twenty-nine point five hours a week with no benefits. It's the health insurance that costs a lot. However, we might have to forfeit approximately six thousand, five hundred dollars because of the change of full-time status to part-time status. I have our county attorney here to discuss it more with you and give insight of how he feels about this situation. But it is clear it's not a good situation, and I'm seeing this type of impact on several payroll positions that are ground funded.
Thank you, Christina. Attorney Armaspy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. First off, I want to start by saying I know the position that you are all in this year and the coming years regarding shortfalls and the challenges that we're going to have with the budget. And I think us as department heads are going to feel it, especially in the county attorney's office. This grant, as Ms. Marshal said, is getting smaller, and it's going to get smaller next year. The, when the money was higher, we were able to move one of the part-time victim coordinators up to thirty-five hours a week. At that point, the insurance stepped in. But with this shortfall, we, you know, we were proposing dropping her down to thirty-two point five hours a week. The other part-time victim coordinator here in Rock Springs is at twenty-six hours a week and no change to his status. That would still allow for the insurance aspect that we were hoping to get the match for. If the commission does not feel that's appropriate, then we were going to have to drop the, from thirty-two point five hours down to twenty-nine point five hours. And as Ms. Marshal said, that would take away the insurance, but it would also leave about a six thousand dollar overpay on the grant that we would have to return. So, you know, it's, this is just the proposal we're giving to you. I understand the challenges that we have, and basically, we were just trying to see if we can get the match money so we can at least provide the insurance and maintain it, that thirty-two point five hours that we are proposing, which is, you know, it is a drop. Next year, that's anybody's idea what's going to happen. So, that's pretty much I have unless anybody has any questions.
Thank you, Attorney Armaspy. Commissioners, questions for Ms. Marshal and/or our attorney, Mr. Armaspy?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Shanefield.
I think this would be for Mr. Armaspy, but do you have any statistics around how many victims these two are helping in our community?
I don't have the statistics in front of me about how many victims. I mean, well, basically, the way it's broken down is that we have a full-time victim coordinator that works out of the Justice Center and deals primarily with the Rock Springs cases. And then we have a part-time out of the Rock Springs office. The Justice Center does have the vast majority of cases, I mean, because it is the Rock Springs. So, it's all of RSPD, anything south of, or excuse me, east of the Interstate Exchange. And so, from the sheriff's office, so it does have quite a bit more that comes through here. Then the slack is also picked up over there in the Green River office. So, I could tell you right now that, you know, we're busy. But at this point, due to COVID, you know, we've had to stop filing some charges because there's been a push not to have any court appearances. And we haven't had any trials because those have been blocked until August. We're going to get logjammed real quick. Come August, September, October, November, I don't know when it's going to end, but we're going to get bottlenecked big time with our felony caseload. And so, you know, when we have a trial, these victim coordinators are going beyond the hours that they typically work in order to maintain that coordination with our witnesses and our victims.
Mr. Chairman, could I add to that?
Sure.
Um, Commissioner Shanefield, just so you know, in fiscal year nineteen- Um, Commissioner Shanefield, just so you know, in fiscal year nineteen, overall, in the attorney's office, they did provide nine thousand five hundred twenty-eight services. And for unduplicated victim incidents, there was one thousand two hundred and four dol- not dollars, but people. For the two current grant-funded employees, regarding the services, they provided forty-seven percent of those, as well as for the unduplicated victim incidents, fifty-six percent. I mean, just to give you a perspective of what they do. So, and I'm just pulling this from the grant application.
Thank you, Christina.
Thank you.
Any other questions, Commissioners?
Yeah, I have a, I have a question for, for Attorney Armaspy. I guess, you know, whenever we're in these financial times and we have to look at cuts, and I think Christina's numbers kind of may have answered my question, but I'll ask it anyways. How if, could these employees be as effective as you need them? And I know, looking past the logjam over a long time with that, that shrinking hours of twenty-nine point five. So, I guess the question is, how is this, um, overall going to affect, affect the efficiency and effectiveness of your, your department, Danny?
Uh, thank you, Commissioner, for the question. I'll, I'll, to be honest with you, will, will make do. I mean, I could tell you right now that, you know, they're, they're both, they're both busy. You know, if I have to lose positions down the road, I think that's going to be the bigger question. If, if we have to lose one of these positions, I mean, as far as hours are concerned, we will have to make do. I mean, that's, that's, that's the nature that we, that we came in with, and that's the nature I'm going to operate under. When I first became county attorney, I was working with nine deputies as long as I could until I couldn't do it anymore. And then we had to get the tenth. And so, you know, we will, we'll, we'll adjust and, and get by if we have to.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Johnson?
I think this is a relatively insignificant request that we're being asked to provide. And there's budgeting monies apparently available for it. So, I'd make a motion to modify the fiscal year 2021 Victims of Crime Grant application by providing an in-kind match for insurance expenses from the grant's project's budget.
Hey, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
I will second.
We have a second from Commissioner Smith. Further discussion, Commissioners? My only comment will be as insignificant as this is when we possibly having that grant money available. Keep in mind, as we did our budget this year, we only went with minimal cuts through everything to get where we're at, still take the money from reserves or, and carry on to balance. And based on what we're hearing and seeing from the state level, we're going to, there's a good possibility there will be more state programs and parts of state programs cut that will impact employees. And the big question is, is, you know, granted, as insignificant as this adjustment may be, in the future, will those adjustments be more significant? Are we going to be prepared to step up and help? Mr. Attorney, Armaspy said, hey, they would make do. They say they wouldn't, and that type of thing. So, I, I'm a little cautionary at this point in time to pick up the tab on state programs when the state's cutting them. It sends a message that they're probably going to cut them even more. And what's headed down the pipe for us without any help from the state through that rainy day account that we're hoping, as Commissioner Johnson and other Commissioners have talked about, we still don't see any movement because I truly believe that the governor is going to try his every effort possible to do what he can. But it's key that the legislators have to be aboard to make it happen, to make those statute changes and that type of thing. So, I, I just want to send that message out. It's time to start being cautious. It's time to start really looking at these things. And is it going to set a tone to backfill all the programs that may be coming forward that the state's going to cut? Are we in that position? We want to start that. So, that's the only caution I have. And I'd like to make that comment. And that's all I have to say about it for this part of it. So, you have a motion? Do you have a second? Is there any other Commissioners' comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Johnson.
I think this, this is an example of what I've said earlier. When we've eliminated forty-some odd physicians in the county, that's required that we have the existing people that continue to work in the county have to take up that slack. And I think that's true in all departments, including the County Attorney's Department. And I think we, we need to recognize where there are problems and we can help them, we need to help them. And I think this is an example of that.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Commissioners, any further discussion?
I would just like, one, like, one more discussion and that's, I kind of feel with these cuts that if we, if we do pass this position, it's really a Band-Aid for this year because I think next year it could become even more in question. And I think we need to start being a little more critical of some of these things because what we've set up is, short-term, we're okay, and I do think it is an insignificant amount. But as that amount grows over the next couple of years with the budget forecast, it becomes more difficult. So, I think people really have to start preparing for making changes because I think we may not have any choices.
Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. Any other discussion, Commissioners? With that, I'll call for the question. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Well, one opposed, four support. So, motion passes. Thank you, Commissioners. Thank you, Commissioner, or thank you, Christina, and thank you, Danny. Appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
You bet. Like, Tabim will move on as a annual report to the Board of County Commissioners from the Memorial Hospital. And joining us for that report is Ms. Richardson, Irene. Ms. Richardson, CEO. Welcome.
Hello, thank you. Can you all hear me?
Can hear you.
Okay. I just wanted to thank the Commissioners for allowing us the opportunity to talk about our hospital and the last year, all of the accomplishments that we've had. I do have a PowerPoint. I asked Tim if, if, if he could help me share that.
Sure.
Thank you so much, Tim. I appreciate that. Okay, um, so again, thank you so much. We want to thank our Commissioners for all of their support. You guys have been wonderful supporters of the hospital and we appreciate it. And, and we, we want to make sure that we do our, the best we can to serve the patients of Sweetwater County and the, the community. And so, I just wanted to give you a summary of our year-end review. So, if you go to the next slide. Okay, so our agenda, oh, I tried to get fancy with this, but I don't know if that's going to work out that well. So, so first, we'll do our introductions. We'll talk about our Board of Trustees, our executive leadership team. You'll see our employed physician and provider team, all of the services that we offer. And I'll give you a quick update on our strategic plan. And then go over kind of our year-end review. Talk a little bit about the COVID-19 impact. Talk about our statistics, all the volume that we've seen in the hospital over the last year. Discuss our county maintenance fund and the Title 25 payments. And then talk a little bit about our foundation, the year-end review for the foundation. And then go over any questions if you have any, okay? So, the next page. So, per the Wyoming statute, we present annually at the June meeting of the County Commissioners. So, this is our obligation and our pleasure to do this, to, to be able to talk about the wonderful things we're doing here at the hospital. We are a joint-commission accredited ninety-nine-bed rural acute care hospital located in southwest Wyoming. And we serve a region exceeding ten thousand square miles. We have five hundred and twenty employees. And we serve a population in excess of forty-three thousand in Sweetwater County alone, as well as surrounding areas. We provide a vast array of inpatient and outpatient services and emergent care. And we continue to maintain a strong and viable presence in our community. So, next, our Board of Trustees. We have Taylor Jones, Richard Mathie, Marty Kelsey, Barbara Sawada, and Ed Tardoni. And our County Commissioner Liaison is Commissioner Jeff Smith. That's a great group. They're very supportive of the hospital. And we love the, the, the input that our board and our County Commissioner Liaison have. They're very helpful. And like I said, we're very fortunate because they, they are very instrumental in helping move our hospital and our services forward. So, I want to thank all of those people our board and our County Commissioner Liaison and all the County Commissioners for everything that you guys do to support us. So, our executive leadership team, Chief Executive Officer, that's me, Chief Clinical Officer, Carrie Quickendon, Chief Financial Officer, Tammy Love, Chief Medical Officer, Melinda Poyer, Dr. Melinda Poyer, and then our Chief Nursing Officer, Kristy Nielsen. And the next page, you'll see, or Tiny, but all of our employed physicians and, and providers. And that's a, a great group of, of, of medical staff providers. We are so proud of them and everything that they've done to improve the healthcare in Sweetwater County. So, I want to make sure to thank them for everything that they do. There's pictures, we're missing just one picture on there, and that's Dr. Glynn. But we'll, we'll be getting her picture on there shortly. And so, that's our team of employed physicians and providers. And then the next slide kind of discusses all of the services we provide. Again, while we're a full, full-service acute care hospital, the services in bold are the newest services that we've implemented this past year. We have a peritoneal dialysis program that we implemented. We just, the foundation purchased a state-of-the-art 3D mammography unit for us. We offer telehealth. We, we set that up in April and also our walk-in clinic. And then dermatology services through the University of Utah. So, we hope to bring more services. That's, that's basically our goal as, as the county hospital, is to provide healthcare for all of the residents and improve services and increase services so that we can keep our healthcare here at home. Our strategic plan update. Of course, we created our 2018 to 2021 strategic plan in March of 2018. So, we're kind of in our third year. It's, it's been very beneficial for us to have this kind of plan and, and goals that we've been able to follow this, these past couple of years. We're going to start creating our new strategic plan, the 2021 to 2024, 2025 plan. Probably the end of this year or the beginning of next year. So, we've got a lot of work to do so that we can start creating our new strategic plan. So, our mission is compassionate care for every life we touch. Our vision to be our community's trusted healthcare leader. Our values to be kind, to be respectful, to be accountable, to work collaboratively and embrace excellence. And our strategies, of course, are patient experience, quality and safety, the workplace experience, growth and community and financial stewardship. So, on the next slide, you can kind of see a summary of all of our goals and initiatives. And I'm just going to go right next, right to the next slide. Tim, thank you so much for helping. I appreciate you. So, with our first one, patient experience, our goal here was to make sure that we improved, improved the patient experience for the patient and their families. And we wanted to increase our, our, improve our patient experience scores. And the way that we did that was to actually change the culture of, of how we provide care here. So, we brought in a group called Plain Tree. And we are training our entire staff, physicians, our board members. Everyone is getting this person-centered care training. And you'll see later on, I'll go into a little bit more detail about that and how many, how many of our staff and physicians and board that we've trained so far. And it really has been working for us. We've improved our, our overall patient satisfaction scores in almost every category. So, we're really excited about that. We're really excited about the results. And we're going to be implementing some new programs that we're going to train our entire staff on. So, this has been, over the, the last couple of years, really nice to see it develop and, and really exciting to, to see our staff embrace our, our culture of, of making sure we put our patients first, every patient, every time. So, so it does, it does take a while. But, but our staff has been amazing. Our physicians have been amazing. Our board has been amazing. And so, we're, we're really fortunate. And, and again, that's, that's been our goal is, is to make sure that we, we give the patient the best experience they can when they come in and receive our services. Our next pillar is quality and safety. And again, we want to make sure that our staff, our patients, receive the highest quality care and that we keep them and our patients and our staff safe. So, we, we looked at some lean process improvement. Our quality department has done an amazing job of making sure our measures are really good and exceed our goals. We maintained our four-star quality rating with CMS. We'll go into detail more in a little bit with that. So, we're very proud of, of what we've accomplished in, in the quality realm of, of, of our hospital. And again, like I said, I'll go into a little bit more detail later on. So, we're really excited about the things we've done in quality, especially with our, with our process improvement and, and making sure that our quality is, is as good as, as it should be. Community and growth. Again, we did our healthcare, a community healthcare needs assessment. We tried to identify what the community needs from the hospital. And so, we've tried to improve our access to our services by, you know, be, becoming more efficient, by providing more services, by making, you know, more appointments available to, to our community. And again, improving our services, and you'll see more on that later. So, our community is, is just amazing. We'll go into a little bit more detail in that a little bit later. But we are here to serve our community. We're the county hospital. And so, when, when our community needs us, we want to be there for them. So, that's our goal, is to, to provide services and provide the best healthcare we can for our community. So, that's, that's what we're trying to do with that pillar. Our workplace experience is our staff. We, our goal was to decrease our turnover. We've accomplished that. We were at twenty-six percent turn, turnover, and now we're at nineteen percent. And we've done that over the last couple of years. We've been able to reduce our agency staffing expense. And it was about three million dollars in 2016. And now, we budgeted this year around two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. So, we've been able to shift some of that agency staffing to our own staff. And so, we're really excited about that because that means that, that people want to work at the hospital and want to be here with us. So, so we're pleased about that. We also implemented our intranet so that we can improve our communication to our staff. And the staff can have one central location where they can find information that takes place inside the hospital. And we'll go into a little bit more detail on that as well. And then financial stewardship. Our goal here was to maintain our BB plus credit rating. We actually did that. We, we were really happy that Standard and Poor's was, was able to give us We actually did that. We, we were really happy that Standard and Poor's, um, wa- was able to give us, um, to affirm our BB plus, um, credit rating. And so, um, and that was with a negative outlook. So nothing changed for that. That was our goal. Um, and we were really excited that, that Standard and Poor's did that. We know, um, kind of what our marching orders are moving forward for next year. So we're going to implement some of those suggestions that Standard and Poor's gave us. Again, we talked about some of the six penny projects. We know that, that, um, process has been put on hold. And so we did identify some projects, but, but we're, we're waiting to get more direction on that. And again, our goal financially, um, is, is obviously to not violate bond covenants, but also to invest back into the organization. We, again, we, we want to make sure that we have, um, the staff and the equipment and the services that we need so that we can provide the best healthcare we can for the residents of Sweetwater County. So that's always our goal is to invest right back into the organization, whatever cash flow that we have. So our next slide, um, kind of gives you a little year in review. We had all sorts of great things happen at the hospital last year. We're very excited and very proud of everything that we've done over the last year. And, um, so I just want to kind of go over a few of those things. And, and just give you a little bit more detail on our, on the things that we've done. So first talking about our, um, greatest resource. And I think we can go to the next slide, Tim, if that's okay. Okay, thank you. Um, our greatest resource is our staff. We're so proud of our staff. Our staff has been resilient and strong and, um, still maintain the great outlook, um, you, you know, over, um, the things that have, that have gone on over the last several years. But, but I, I wanted to shout out to our staff and, and, and thank them for everything that they've done. And, um, and again, they, they are our greatest resource. We've implemented our new, um, healthcare, um, information system through healthcare source. It allows us to electronically, um, manage our, our positions. Um, and our position control team still meets regularly so that we can identify positions that we, whether we, we need them or that or not, or whether we can consolidate some duties. And, um, so we meet regularly to make sure that we manage our FTEs. And that's worked out well for us over the last several years. It also allows us to manage our performance, um, evaluations, um, online, um, our evaluations and our appraisals. And that's streamlined a lot of the processes and human resources for us. And it allows us to do our net learning, which is our annual education and competencies for our staff. We also, again, we talked about our new intranet that was law implemented and launched. And again, that's internally our internal and, um, information that's shared with our staff so that they could have one place to receive all of the communication and all the, the information that, that happens in the hospital. And that was a really successful implementation, um, by human resources. So we thank them for that. We also completed HIPAA training for all of our staff. We, the presentation included new hire and annual education. And then additional trainings are conducted by, um, HR director throughout the facility. So that's just our, um, patient privacy training that we do, um, so that we can make sure that, that all of the information, all the patient information is, is protected, um, and, and make sure that our staff is educated on that. So next, um, we also implemented our employee recognition program, which is called Bravo. And that's where employees have the opportunity to, um, recognize each other. And that's worked out really well because we want to make sure that we recognize our staff and thank them for all the hard work that they do. Our HR committee meets monthly. We review our policies and update them. And, um, you know, the board has been very instrumental in helping us with that and, and we really appreciate that. We want to make sure that our policies are good and up to date. And we've done a really good job of that over the last year. Again, we mentioned that our current employee turnover is about nineteen percent. That's down from twenty-six percent and that was our goal. Specifically, our, our, our RN turnover for the past year is thirteen percent, which is below the national average of seventeen point eight percent RN turnover in the United States in hospitals in twenty nineteen. So we're really proud of that. And as of March, um, twenty twenty, sixty-six percent of our nurses have, uh, Bachelor of Science in Nursing or above. And this is also greater than the current national data that shows that fifty-six percent of nurses in the U.S. have a BSN or above. So we're really proud of our, our nurses and our staff because they, they continue to, um, to develop themselves and, and we encourage that. And we're really proud of that. And we had several of our staff received their BSNs and their masters over the last year. So we want to congratulate them and, and thank them for, for their diligence and, and furthering their education. So some staff accomplishments, I want to talk, um, about some things that our staff has done over the last year. Christine Nielsen, our CNO, was asked to join a group of thirteen experienced nurses from around the United States in reviewing and revising the nation's nursing scope and standards of nursing practices scope. Work on the fourth edition book revision has been ongoing since August twenty nineteen, with publication due sometime in twenty twenty. This book, The Nursing Scope and Standards of Practice, Nursing Practice is the authoritative resource used by state boards of nursing, schools of nursing, and all healthcare settings that serve, serves as a foundation of nursing practice. So Christie has been instrumental in that and she was invited to do that. And so that was a, a really high honor for us. So we're really proud of Christie for, for doing that and, and, and writing those standards. Um, she's, she's amazing at that. And so we're really proud of her. We want to focus on four of our respiratory therapists here at the hospital who recently received extra certification. Our cardio pulmonary director, Crystal Hamlin, Amanda Armanderas, Carol Burke, and Rhonda Piercy all received National Institute for Occupational Safety and Health Pulmonary Function Testing Certification after completing a two-day course in late November. So we're really proud of them for that. Next, Nicole Halsted, who is the director of, um, our dialysis unit, received the twenty twenty MHSC Nightingale Award and Sue Park received the Nightingale Award in twenty nineteen. This is an award which, um, in which a nurse is nominated by our hospital nursing staff for role modeling and, um, maintaining our hospital mission and values. Janelle Scott was honored with the Daisy Award in twenty nineteen. She was also a nurse in ICU. The Daisy Award is based on nominations received by patients and their families for nursing, for nurses going above and beyond. Carrie Downs, who's our director of medical staff services, was elected as a secretary treasurer of the Wyoming Association of Medical Staff Services. And our volunteers had approximately three thousand four hundred volunteer hours this year. And the total number of cumulative hours for our current volunteers is forty-four thousand seven hundred hours. So we're really proud of them for that. I was appointed to the Wyoming Hospital Board, uh, so Wyoming Hospital Association Board of Directors. Tammy Love, our CFO, was appointed as director on the Wyoming chapter of HFMA, which is a healthcare financial management association. Carrie Quickenden, our chief clinical officer, attended American Hospital Association Executive Forum, addressing disruption through innovation of value. And this was in Denver in September of last year. Carrie was a participant on the panel for the following partnerships for value leadership of conversations to address clinical variation. And she also attended the quarterly AHA clinical leadership meetings. And Chris, your CNO, was honored with the twenty nineteen Whamming Women of Influence Award in the category of Best Mentor in Casper in June of twenty nineteen. So we want to shout out to those. Um, our medical staff accomplishments, our accomplishments. Dr. Stewart, internal medicine physician, completed the Utah Certificate of Palate of Education in October of twenty nineteen. At the U of U in November of twenty nineteen, he was selected as an adjunct, uh, so assistant professor for the U of U. Dr. Danker, orthopedic surgeon, became board certified in twenty nineteen. Dr. Simington, she's a hematology oncologist. She, um, had an article published, When Less Is More, or Acknowledging the Value of Tincture of Time, published in the Journal of Clinical Oncology. Dr. Simington was awarded the American College of Physicians Idaho Laureate Award in January of twenty twenty. This was awarded for outstanding services of physician. Idaho has only awarded this award three times since nineteen ninety. In addition, Dr. Simington and the Cancer Center are ready to start clinical trials. Unfortunately, due to COVID, these have been delayed, but we're, they're still working on, on getting those started. And the Cancer Center won the ASCO, um, Nyer Cho's Rural Cancer Center, Center Care Quality Improvement Grant. So, um, next, Jackie Lindsay. She's a, uh, nurse practitioner. She worked, um, as a point person on the ASCO Rural Cancers, uh, Care Quality Improvement Grant. And that was, which was a part of, awarded to the Cancer Center. Tammy Walker, um, another nurse practitioner in pediatrics, completed, uh, the Keep Your Children Safe and Secure Fellowship through Ohio State University Pediatric Mental Health Fellowship. Tammy has also completed the Creating Opportunities for Personal Empowerment Certification, and that's Resiliency Skills Building Program for Children and Teens. Dr. Oliver, our orthopedic surgeon, one of our orthopedic surgeons, was appointed to Memorial Hospital Foundation Board. Dr. Brand Croft, one of our general surgeons, was named Outstanding Whammy Alumni for twenty nineteen. And Dr. Alicia Gray, um, uh, one of our hospitalists, became board certified in August. We have a couple of new physicians joining us. Our new radiation oncologist, Dr. Binks, will be joining us in July. And then Dr. Prachi Puar is a neurologist and she'll be joining us in October. So some of the hospital awards and accomplishments over the last year, again, we talked about our four-star quality rating. Patient care at Memorial Hospital, Sweetwater County, achieved a four-star rating from the Centers Medicare Medicaid Services, CMS. This was, this achievement, achievement was awarded in twenty nineteen and again in twenty twenty. So I think it's important to note that we were awarded the four-star rating in twenty nineteen and we maintained it in twenty twenty. CMS uses a five-star quality rating to measure the quality of care provided by a hospital. The information from hospitals nationwide is compiled and a rating system is then produced on a one-to-five scale called a star rating. The CMS program ranks nearly four thousand six hundred hospitals in the United States in fifty-seven quality measures and several different categories. A portion of these quality measures captures information related to the patient's experience of their care. Only about thirty percent of those hospitals receive four stars or higher. So, um, we are proud that we're in that group. And again, a shout out to our staff and to our board for helping us, um, achieve and maintain our four-star rating. A couple of more accomplishments. The Wyoming Quality Excellence Award, for three years in a row, our hospital has, has received a Whamming Quality Excellence Award. Mountain Pacific Quality Health recognized, um, our hospital with a twenty nineteen Hospital Quality Excellence Award for outstanding performance and effectively using quality assurance, performance improvement methodologies to improve care practices. Mountain Pacific Quality Health is Wyoming's quality improvement organization with the goal of promoting excellence in healthcare through safe, patient-centered, and cost-effective practices. The award recognizes hospitals for their successful accomplishments with patient experience, care coordination, patient and family engagement, and the advancement of these achievements within communities. So really proud of our staff for, uh, for achieving that reward. Next, our hos-, uh, some more hospital awards and accomplishments. We received accreditation of our laboratory services through the joint commission. And after a, um, a thorough and comprehensive survey, there were minimal findings. So we're really proud of our lab for all the work that they've done. Um, our preliminary twenty nineteen MIPS, which is Merit-Based Incentive Payment System, scores, um, is above seventy-five. Our preliminary score is seventy-eight point eight and this final score will be released in July. And we will likely qualify for the exceptional performance bonus, which is just additional reimbursement for that. Our hospital was also awarded the Wyoming State Twenty Twenty Silver Syringe Award for efforts in vaccinating children's, children in our community. And in twenty nineteen, our hospital received recognition from the Wyoming Department of Health and Centers, or CMS, as a certified paratonal dialysis service. Our paratonal dialysis survey elicited zero deficiencies. And we are one of two recognized paratonal dialysis services in Wyoming. Some more accomplishments. In May of twenty twenty, we received the WCRS grant. So we received the nine thousand dollar grant, um, for our cancer center from Wyoming Cancer Resource Services. The grant money will be used to purchase Rad formations, easy fluent software. And then in January of twenty twenty, we received the ASCO grant, um, for our cancer center. And we're one of ten oncology practices nationwide to receive this three-year grant from the American Society of Clinical Oncology. And it targets improvement in delivery of cancer care in underserved populations. So we're really proud of our staff for getting those, um, grants. Our new website, sweetwatermemorial.com, um, Deb Sutton did a great job, um, creating that. And, and she worked really hard with Scorpion, um, a marketing and technology company that serves the healthcare industry. We created an easy-to-navigate site. The site continues to offer user-friendly features which could, uh, such as online bill pay, career opportunities, and access to both patient portals. Visitors to the website will also find enhanced provider tab, leadership team listing, and contact information and services listing, so that you can plan your visit. Some of the new features include information on how to volunteer, area healthcare resources, and the hospital's person-centered care initiative. The new primary care page outlines options for your stop, first stop in medical care. We have family practice, um, pediatrics, internal medicine. And then, um, once our new EMR is online, the patient portals will be much, you, much more user-friendly. So we're really excited about our website. So if you have a chance to visit that at sweetwatermemorial.com, please do so and see all the new things that are available on the website. Some more hospital updates. We continue to offer our wellness testing to our community every Tuesday and Wednesday. No appointment is necessary. You can just come in and have your blood drawn. And, um, we offer a huge, um, battery of tests in the lab, um, at a greatly reduced price. So please take advantage of that. In twenty nineteen, we served one thousand three hundred and thirteen patients seeking wellness testing, which is an increase of over twenty-five percent from the previous year. So please take advantage of that. There's lots of opportunities there to get the, the lab testing, the, and then the, the results go directly to your primary care provider. We also provided an average of twenty-two meals each day for patients with special diets, um, for Meals on Wheels. And we are in the process of transitioning, um, to Press Ganey for our patient satisfaction surveys. We're really excited about this transition. We're moving from PRC to Press Ganey. And so our patient satisfaction surveys will look a little bit different, but, but, um, you know, we're going to start implementing that moving forward. So we're really excited about that. Some more hospital updates. We created our chronic care management program. We have approximately eighty-five people involved, enrolled, sorry about that. We're working toward adding, um, behavioral health integration program with the use of telepsychiatrist. The goal is to provide a stable community of psychiatric care for our community and in the outpatient setting. So we're really proud of that program that the clinic, um, has, um, implemented. And, and they've done a great job implementing that. We also have certified, um, most of our providers on our staff in NIOSH, CAHO, and BAT and drug screening certifications. And one of our providers is also MRO certified. So we're really proud of our staff for those accomplishments. We've worked closely with the two nursing homes in our area to continue to provide the medical director for both programs and are using telemedicine in those facilities to help that population stay safe and healthy. We've worked cohesively with the University of Utah outreach programs, um, that include being able to provide services for cardiology, vascular surgery, maternal fetal medicine, and dermatology to see our patients here in our community and decrease the time that they're away from home. So those services are available here through the University of Utah. Some additional updates. We started the walk-in clinic to assist our patients with same-day appointments. We built our telehealth program during the COVID nineteen pandemic to ensure our patients have the ability to, our providers have the ability to see our patients safely, safely and efficiently. We established an electronic check-in system in all of our clinics. It helps with appointments and reminders and less paperwork. And that helps in our efficient, in our efficiency and our, um, access to our providers. And we also enhanced our patient navigation program with additional special, with an additional specialist as our program continues to grow. Patty Sickney's done an amazing job growing that program. Our specialists assist patients with governmental program applications, free or reduced drug programs, healthcare grants from nonprofits, and medical assistance. The program has received encouraging feedback from the community and we've seen a positive financial results from the program for our patients as well as hospitals. So they've done a great job implementing that program. So they've done a great job implementing that program. Some more hospital updates. Our cancer center celebrated their five-year anniversary and had a very successful community event and celebration. We hosted a masquerade party, unmasking breast cancer event in our Paint the Town Pink campaign. And we were awarded that Paint the Town Pink Breast Cancer Awareness Grant again for the third year in a row. Again, we'd mentioned being close to starting our clinical trials. And in the cancer center, we also started the Patient Navigation and Survivorship Team Program. We've initiated a new chemo education process, and they're currently upgrading processes and flows such as advanced directives and tobacco cessation and education. And they're involved with helping start the Wyoming State Oncology Society. So lots of exciting things happening at the cancer center. This last year, our Electronic Medical Record Steering Committee spent the year vetting new electronic medical records for our hospital and clinics. We are looking at purchasing a new electronic health record, more functional, more integrated electronic health record that's going to help us with, be way more efficient and be on the same platform throughout our hospital and our clinic. So we're really excited about this. It will be one integrated system, including the emergency room, the clinic, and the hospital, and it will replace the multiple systems that we currently have. We've chosen our vendor after several months of virtual demonstrations and calls with reference hospitals and evaluations of each system. And we hope to start the year-long implementation early 2021. We'll probably take that request to our board in August or September so that they can approve it. But we did include the purchase of a new electronic health record in our budget this year. IT projects completed this year include the replacement of all wireless access points across the hospital to improve connectivity for our staff and patients and visitors. We also replaced old security cameras and added several new throughout the building and across the campus in an effort to update our aging security system and keep everyone safe. We educated our leaders and staff on lean process improvement, how to lean form to present our projects. This is helping us with our process improvement, and again, obviously with our quality scores. Our sepsis work group worked with multiple team members to develop new census, sepsis bundle and order set and created campaigns for sepsis awareness day. We recreated our PIPs Plan and Committee Reporting Structure, and that's our, our Performance Improvement and Patient Safety Plan. We're really proud of all the work that's been done there with our quality committee and with our board. We developed our new strategy for joint commission and rebranded the Regulatory Committee. We develop, we developing a new strategy for patient safety, and we were in the process of administering our culture safety survey to our staff. Moving on to our hospital culture, we're really proud of the things that are happening here. We're moving to a person-centered care culture. And to do that, we are training all of our staff, physicians, board. Everyone is going through our person-centered care, our quote-unquote experiential workshops. They, we do those every Wednesday, and we've had to actually increase that to other dates and times so that we can accommodate all of our staff. We do several sessions each month. To date, we've had over 415 staff, physicians, and trustees complete the workshops. And help with, with the workshop leaders. Cindy Nelson has been instrumental in leading this, this culture change. She's, she's done a great job of, of, of working with the staff on this, and the staff are really receptive to her. And Patty Alexi, they're a couple of our trainers. We're really proud to have them. And so we try to show, we try to make sure that our staff understands that this is our culture, and this is the way that we're moving into the future. And so everyone has really embraced this. We're really proud of our staff for, you know, going through the workshop and, and not only going through the workshop, but embracing it and, and trying to move toward this person-centered care culture. After we train our whole staff, which was one of our goals of our strategic plan, is our, to train communicating with empathy. And we planned to kick that off in May, but we were a little bit delayed due to COVID-19. But we have moved our first session to September. So we're going to continue to train our staff with communicating with empathy. And we're really excited to bring that on. And we think by that time, hopefully, we'll have our entire staff trained on our person-centered care training. Our Person-Centered Care Steering Committee continues to meet and work on cultural, cultural assessment areas of improvement for patients, visitors, and staff. The executive champion is Carrie Quickenden, and the physician champion is Dr. Bonu Simington. We commit to begin each committee meeting with a patient's story and encourage all meetings to start with a patient's story or mission moment. The committee of group is a group of over 40 staff members on a mission to foster a culture of person-centered care at our hospital where patients, families, and staff consistently experience quality compassion and partnership. So we're really proud of that group for everything that they've done. Our Patient and Family Advisory Council, we've got a group of about 21 patients and family members. We meet monthly at the hospital. We have a dozen or so, usually attend sometimes more, sometimes less. But people always submit their feedback via email, and anyone is welcome to be part of that. We want to make sure that we hear from our patients and their families to know exactly what it is that they need from their county hospitals. So we're really proud of that group, and we appreciate all the community members and all the patients and other families for volunteering to be part of that. It's, it's a really great committee. Hospital maintenance. We want to thank the commissioners for helping us to maintain our hospital. With our central plant upgrade, the construction of the new central plant upgrade continues with the new cooling towers being installed this week. The project is about 70% complete with an estimated completion date in July. We were informed by Rocky Mountain Power, we would be receiving $90,000 rebate check once a project is completed due to the energy savings we expect from the project. So thank you to the commissioners for helping with this project. We really appreciate it, and it was very, very necessary. Our maintenance projects, again, with the help from our county commissioners, we're able to complete multiple deferred maintenance projects around the hospital and clinics. Some of the larger projects included a new roof over the ICU, fall protection installed on the entire roof, crack ceiling of all the parking lots, needed tank repairs to our underground storage tanks, upgrading of ceiling sprinklers in the basement level, and code renovation for the pharmacy compounding room. Many small renovation projects along with routine maintenance were also reimbursed through the maintenance fund. So I also emailed the county commissioners the reconciliation of the maintenance fund reimbursements that we've submitted to you. So again, very grateful for that fund and all the help that the commissioners have given us over the last year so that we can make, make sure to maintain the building. So thank you again for that. And so the next COVID-19, we'll talk a little bit about that. In late February of 2020, our hospital stood up our incident command in order to prepare for the novel coronavirus, SARS-CoV-2. Our number one goal was to ensure the safety of our staff, patients, and community. Our efforts to minimize and stop the spread of COVID-19 were very successful, we feel, with the help of really working collaboratively with the county EOC, Sweetwater County Public Health, and all the other healthcare providers in the community. We did ensure that we minimized the spread of COVID-19 and kept our community safe. So I want to give a huge shout out to the county EOC, to public health, and all the healthcare providers. I think everyone worked really collaboratively and really well together because this really was a collaborative effort. And I, I think we did help keep our community safe. And I think everything was, I think Sweetwater County is in good, good hands health-wise. We have a lot of great healthcare providers, and everyone really stepped up and, and, and worked on, on this together. So, you know, working with the stakeholders meeting every Thursday, that's all the healthcare providers. It's been very beneficial to have conversations with everyone that provides healthcare. And I'm really proud of all the, the work that everybody's been doing in the entire community to serve the patients of Sweetwater County. So we work collaboratively with the community and for the collection of the, the COVID-19 specimens and the reporting of the results to public health so that we can do that contact tracing. That's worked out really well. We, we've been preparing our specimens for send-out testing and then managing the results. We currently perform the in-house testing by our molecular methods on the Abbott ID Now and BioFire platforms. And we're preparing to start the validation process for the SEPHID platform. We are prepared to perform COVID-19 in-house antibody testing. And as of June 13th, we've performed 1,790 tests with 30 positive cases being reported. Through this whole COVID-19 and even, even more, I want to, I want to thank our community and give them a huge shout out. They've been wonderful to us. They've been so incredibly kind and generous to our hospital and all of the, the healthcare providers. So our community deserves a huge shout out and a huge thank you. We just want to, everybody to know, we have a page on our website, Memorial Hospital, Memorial, sweetwatermemorial.com that is dedicated to all of the people and businesses who donated to our hospital in an effort to help us treat COVID and keep our community safe. And all of our donator, donors can be located on the website, and there's the link below if you want to see everyone who's donated. And, and we just want to have, just give a huge shout out and a huge thank you to our community for being so generous, and we're so grateful for that. Next, a couple of statistics. Our admissions this last year so far, 1,888. Our patient days so far, 4,707. Our surgeries, 1,0778. Medical imaging procedures, 23,537. And laboratory procedures, 54,640. Actually visits, those are actually visits. Respiratory therapy visits, 5,458. Cardiovascular visits, 5,0112. Dialysis visits, 5,280. Physical therapy visits, 2,441. And cardiac rehab visits, 3,122. Our clinic visits, 51,076. Oncology visits, 5,112. Our emergency room visits, 13,797. And we've had 480 newborns so far. Sleep lab visits, 478. And we have had 2,135 infusion visits. We've served 103,155 dietary meals. We've done 402,896 pounds of laundry, and we've registered 64,933 patients this year. So we do see a lot of people, and we just want to make sure we, we, we adhere to our mission and provide compassionate care to all of those patients that we've seen. The county maintenance, we want to make sure that we adhere to the statute, Title 18. Obviously, the, the maintenance fund. And again, we've, we've given you the reconciliation of, of those, of those maintenance funds so that you can see where the dollars that you've given us have been spent. And also Title 25, and there's the statute there. And those are the funds that we receive for our patients who are in detention or involuntary hospitalization. So again, thank you to our commissioners for helping us with that funding. We really appreciate it. If you have any questions on that reconciliation, please let me know. And finally, talk about, like to talk about our Memorial Hospital, Sweetwater County Foundation. Our foundation received several grants over the last year from the Helmsley Charitable Trust. We received $50,541 for four Lucas pumps. The Wyoming Department of Health, $5,720. The Cancer Center in Wyoming Cancer Resource Services was awarded grant to implement patient reminder program to encourage cancer screenings for qualifying patients. Wyoming Department of Health, we received $198,600 for the Cancer Center to consent, continue with the Wyoming Cancer Resource Services Program. And this is a second grant award for the two-year program. And then the Wyoming Breast Health Initiative Cancer Centers Grant for the 2020 Paint the Town Pink, which is the breast health event. The purchases, again, the four Lucas machines through the Helmsy Grant for $50,541. Those machines perform CPR on patients so that the staff aren't at risk for potential COVID-19 as a result of performing CPR. These were placed in the ED ICU med surgeon, the clinic. And then, of course, our, our big purchase that we're so grateful for, there are 3D digital mammography unit for $396,290. This includes a smart curve technology to improve patient comfort. It's the only location in southwest Wyoming with this technology. So we're very grateful to the foundation for, for purchasing that for the hospital and giving, being able to give back to the community by making this purchase. A couple of updates for the foundation. The Waldner House, we've seen at least one patient or family member stay in the Waldner House since January of 2020, with the exception of approximately 30 days. Our foundation feet program has provided $6,000 to employees in need through the program in fiscal year 2020. And that's where the employees donate to this fund for fellow employees. We've, we're building our community committees to help increase private giving and establishing planned gifts. And Whale Radio, the radio network, and Kelly's Convenience Centers teamed up to host our Cruisin' the Drag event in Rock Springs and Green River, and we raised more than $15,000. And so we really are grateful for all of those events, or all of those things that are happening through, at the foundation. Just a huge shout out again to our foundation and our community. When our community donates to our foundation and our foundation donates back to our hospital, our hospital uses the funds to buy equipment and provide services to the community. So I feel like that's a, that circle is completely, whenever our community donates, our foundation donates to us, and then we give back to the community by providing services and buying equipment to increase the ability to stay here and receive healthcare here. So that's been a huge success for us. So we want to thank our community and our foundation for making that happen. And that's all I have. Does anyone have any questions or comments? I know that was long. Thank you for listening.
Very good. Thank you, Irene. We appreciate it very much. Commissioners, any questions for Ms. Richardson?
Just to comment, Mr. Chairman and Irene, it's very obvious, at least to me, that the hospital's number one in Sweetwater County. The 44,000 people in, in the county should be very appreciative of the great hospital they have and, and the great people they have working in that hospital, providing the care. This was an excellent PowerPoint. I hope a lot of people saw it. It, it shows what you're doing, and that's what the public needs to know. And again, thank you so very much for the great work that you and your staff do for all of us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. Other, Commissioner Smith?
Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to say thank you to Irene and the rest of the board, and Taylor especially for the, the great work. It's, it's wonderful to work with them as a liaison and very professional in the work that they do. And we really have some great and wonderful minds that are working there and couldn't be in better hands. And so I really do appreciate them, and especially Irene for leading the way. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioners, any other comments? One final comment, yes, I can echo both commissioners' thoughts and recognition. Although the adding to that is the people of Sweetwater County that have come out and support the hospital. And it's not only, it's quite obvious with the numbers. It's not just citizens of Sweetwater County, it's citizens of southwest Wyoming that are seeking quality medical services here at Memorial. So that's a tribute, Irene, to you, your staff, the doctors, and, and everybody working at the hospital, the board, and that. So congratulations, a great PowerPoint, and it's come a long ways, a long ways, young lady.
Thank you. We appreciate all of the help. The commissioners have been wonderful to us, and we, we want to make you guys proud, and we want to make the county, or the county and the community proud. And so that's, that's our goal every day. And again, we appreciate you helping us with everything that you've done. And if you have any questions, please let me know. I know that was a lot, and again, thank you for listening, but I'm really proud of our staff and our physicians for all the work that they've done, and I, I know I didn't mention everyone, but but they've, everyone has done an amazing job at that hospital, so I want to thank them and our board and our commissioners, and we appreciate you guys. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Irene, and we appreciate you and the hospital and everyone that's involved. Stay safe and continue, continue the great work. Thank you.
You too. Thank you.
You're welcome. Commissioners, let's take a ten-minute break. And come on back, and then we'll start up with the TABM, which is the payment agreement for property damage with Mr. McLean. So ten minutes quickly, be back here at eleven-thirty approximately. Thank you. Are we ready to go? We're ready. Okay, I'll call this meeting back to order, commissioners. With that, we'll move on with our agenda and we'll go to TABM, which is a payment agreement for property damage, and with us this morning is Mr. McLean, our HR Director. Good morning, Gary.
Morning, County Commissioners. Good morning, Ms. Chairman. In your pack, it's a copy of an agreement that was, a payment agreement that was put together in cooperation with the County Attorney's Office. This is, agreement is an agreement to repay the expenses of damage that was caused on April twenty-second to the fence at one of the county's parks due to an automobile accident collided with that fence. The damage incurred as a result of that was one thousand four hundred and seventy dollars. The individual requested to, to pay monthly on that payment. This agreement reflects that. Repairs have already been completed to the facility. And the agreement under the creditor's signature essentially is just a board action and authorization for the chairman to sign on behalf of the creditor, which would be Sweetwater County. Any questions from the board regarding the payment agreement?
Commissioners, any questions regarding this payment agreement from Mr. McLean? With no questions, commissioners, what's your pleasure with this agreement and authorizing the chairman to sign?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Johnson? You're muted.
Excuse me. It's been a long afternoon or morning. I'd make motion to approve the payment agreement as presented and to authorize the chairman to sign as the creditor for the county.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. We have motion to approve and authorize the chairman to sign as creditor. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion, commissioners? No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, Commissioner. Moving on to TABM, which is board appointments. So with that, we will start out first of all with an airport, airport board appointment, and with that, we have Sweetwater County Board, Airport Board, they have a vacancy due to expiring term of former board member Pete Russ. Current members, he is eligible for reappointment. As well as, did he put in an application? I don't believe so. Forget it. Yes. Yes, we do have one. So the board member, Mr. Russ, is available for reappointment. As well as we have another new applicant, Nellie Nutting, so commissioners, who's our liaison, Mr. Smith?
That'd be me, Mr. Chairman, and two excellent candidates, and I appreciate them both applying. Mayor Rust is the incumbent, if you will. He has served very well and, and appreciate him, and so would very much like to recommend that we continue with Mr. Rust as a board member. Ms. Nutting, also a very great candidate and would encourage her to stay in the loop as other vacancies come open as well, so very much appreciate both of them, but would recommend Mr. Rust for this.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. Other commissioners, thoughts?
I agree and second that motion.
Okay, so there was a motion in this second to, to appoint Mr. Russ to the airport for any further discussion, commissioners? Commissioner Lloyd? Okay. No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, will notify Mr. Russ that he will continue to serve. Board appointment for the Fine Arts Center. And we have a three-year term due that is expired by board member Suzie Von Erns. She is eligible for reappointment as well as we have an applicant of Jacob Muldowney, so comments, commissioners, our liaison for Fine Arts Centers, that's who? Library. Roy?
That would be me, and I, and looking at both applicants, they both look fairly solid, but we'd like to, I'd like to recommend reappointing Suzie Von Erns.
Okay. Other commissioners, thoughts?
I concur.
Second term, yes. You concur, yes. Okay, anybody else feel differently? With that, I will entertain a motion from Commissioner Lloyd, his liaison, to point Suzie Von Erns to second term.
I would still move.
A second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Shanefield. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next up, library board. Again, we have a vacant position on the board. The library board, due to expiring term of Brenda Casey, she is eligible for reappointment in Zires Act. Also, you have another applicant of William Journey. Mr. Lloyd, I'll, you being liaison, let you go ahead and start. Can't hear you, Roy. You're muted.
Well, that was the best speech I've given all day, and only I heard, so we'll make it simpler. I do appreciate Mr. Journey for putting in and encouraging to continue putting in, but my recommendation would be Brenda Casey, who has been a solid member, and I think she's currently the chair of the library board. I would recommend her for reappointment. And I would actually make that motion.
We have a motion by Commissioner Lloyd to reappoint Ms. Casey to the library board. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Shanefield. Any further discussion, commissioner? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, commissioners. Let's go on to Memorial Hospital Board. We have one five-year term due to expiring term of Taylor Jones. We did not receive an application from Taylor Jones for consideration of reappointment. We do have new applicants, William Journey and Dr. Sigsby Duck. So I would ask commissioners, your thoughts with regard to this board position?
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Smith?
Could I ask that we delay the, the appointment of this one? My understanding was in talking with, with Taylor Jones that he had submitted a, an application for reappointment. So I'm not sure what happened there. I'd love to have some time to make sure we sort that out and make sure we're looking at all the candidates who had applied.
Mr. Chairman, I was reaching, I was reaching for my moot key too, because I, I cannot believe that Taylor does not want to continue, and I, I would, I think we need to be absolutely sure of that before we move forward on that.
I would agree, so does any other commissioner disagree? All right, so we will, we will set that appointment aside till our next meeting. And to make sure that we have all the applicants necessary, okay?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Sally, please put on the hospital for the next agenda, please, appointment. Let's move into our next museum board appointment. We have, hang on a second. Whoops, I clicked on the wrong one. Got to go for him. There we go. We have three vacancy with three-year terms. Vacancies are due to expiring terms of term of Danielle Mathie, Tim Savage, and Rochelle Rollins Carroll. Eligible for reappointment and did not receive an application for consideration or reappointment is Danielle Mathie. I do believe though that... Let me look here a little further. I... What about Tim Savage and are they interested in reappointment, you know?
Mr. Chairman, I believe that is true. At least that's the document I'm looking at. That Savage and Rollins Carroll are interested.
Yeah, well, yeah.
For chairman, that is correct. And Danielle Mathie, she termed out. She wasn't eligible to apply again.
Okay, very good. So, so we have two returning, two board members wishing to return. And then we have one new applicant, which is Ian Parker to fill the vacancy created by Danielle Mathie.
Also received one from Jennifer Willmety.
Thank you. Thank you. I was just going to say also attached is a application from Jennifer Willmety. So museum board, this Commissioner Shanefield, your thoughts? And then other commissioner.
Um, Mr. Chairman, I would move to reappoint Rochelle and Tim. They've done an excellent job. And I also would like to say thank you to Danielle Mathie. She's spent a considerable amount of time on that museum board. And we really truly appreciate everything that she's done. I would also move to move forward with Ian Parker as the new member.
Okay, so let's start off the two motions. First motion is to reappoint Rochelle Rollins Carroll and Tim Savage to the museum board. And who would entertain that motion? Lauren?
Someone.
All right, and seconded?
I'll second that.
Okay, a second from Commissioner Lloyd. So there's motion and second to reappoint Rochelle Rollins and Tim Savage. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Now, next I'll entertain a motion to appoint Ian Parker to the third, to the vacancy at the museum board.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Johnson?
Could we have some discussion on that, please?
You got it. I'll hold back, hold back that. So go ahead.
I want to make sure that Lauren's got the copy of that, because that was in the packet here, and she may not have received the Willmety application. Lauren, did you receive that?
I just pulled it up to re-review it.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson.
I'd say let's give Lauren a chance to look at that.
All right, let's pass that one over and come back to it. Is it okay with that, Lauren?
I'm fine with that, yes.
All right, remind me to come back to it. Let's move on to our next, number six, planning and zoning commission board appointment.
Mr. Chairman, I've reviewed these and I did some research on them. And what I would recommend is that the, that we appoint John Doak as one of them and Mark Lyon as the other.
Thank you, Commissioner Johnson. We have a motion to approve John Doak and Mark Lyon to the planning and zoning commission. Is there a second?
I'd second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Predatory Animal Board. We have a three-year, one three-year term vacancy due to expiring term of Aaron Drakeoff. We did not receive an application from Aaron for consideration or reappointment. But we do have a new applicant. It's Randy Lottner. Commissioners, what's your desire here?
Mr. Chairman, there's no liaison, I don't believe, for that predatory animal board. So I, I would think the only option we have is to appoint Randy to that board.
I agree with you. Mr. Johnson, we have, is that a motion, Mr. Johnson?
Yes, I'll make that motion.
Okay, we have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Commissioner Lloyd. We have a motion and a second to appoint Randy Lottner to the predatory animal board. Any discussion, commissioners? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Very good. Okay, the next one's up, Solid Waste Disposal District, Eden Valley. We have two vacancies. They're each a three-year term. We have expiring terms of James Hoddard and Frank Keeler. James Hoddard did not submit an application to be reconsidered for reappointment. Frank Keeler did. So that's there. And then the other position would come out of the new ones. First of all, let's do one at a time. Commissioners are working with that group quite a bit out there. If you don't mind, I'll take the fourth first. Frank Keeler has done a great job and very supportive. He's asked questions when they needed to be asked through the whole closure situation. Has been great communication, plus he's a great asset on that board, working with BLM, I believe, and helping with guidance and that. So I would certainly entertain a motion from someone to appoint James Hoddard to reappoint James Hoddard to the Solid Waste Disposal District Board in Eden Valley.
You got that.
You mean Frank Keeler?
Frank Keeler, Frank Keeler, I'm sorry. Frank Keeler.
Then I move that we reappoint Frank Keeler to the Solid Waste Disposal District in Eden Valley.
Thank you. Have a motion and a second. Any other discussion, commissioners? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We do have an empty seat also on that board with a, out of the new applicants. One applicant that's reapplied that served on the board before has been Robert Baldwin, done a good job. Of the other applicants, they're also most part good applicants. Also, another one is Harvey Tynes, I believe. And Harvey bring new blood to it, which has in the past, when I've been out there attending meetings, has talked to the board about the closures, but Sam Poken understands what's going on out there when it came to the pit closure and everything. I know that board out there and the people in some ways would like to see new discussion regarding the transportation as far as keeping guidelines and that type of thing to make it better for serving the people and that type of thing. So Robert Baldwin and Harvey Tynes are my two top for that. And without, I don't know, I certainly wouldn't hear what any of you other commissioners have to say before I make a recommendation. I'll open the floor up for that discussion, because it's a good group of people.
Mr. Chairman, I don't really know of the other candidates, and unfortunately, there wasn't a lot of information involved. I didn't know Robert Baldwin from previous involvement. I think I remember that name and saw it from the past. But I really, I also know Harvey Tynes, and I know, I was really excited to hear that as a, as a citizen, he's, he's attending the meetings and showing an interest. And I, I think that would make me really lean toward maybe what, from what you said, going with Harvey Tynes just as a concept to bring some new blood, but someone that's active and knowledgeable and wants to, wants to jump into it and has been active from a ball, from an outside standpoint.
Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. Any other commissioner?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I, I, I know Mitch Baldwin, and I don't know what Tynes, but I defer to you, Mr. Chairman, on either one and supporting either one you are.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Any other commissioner? Okay, with that, I think, listening to it, I would entertain a motion to appoint Harvey Tynes to the board.
So moved.
Okay, got a motion by Commissioner Johnson. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion? All those in favor by signify, by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Thank you, commissioners. Next up will be the Solid Waste, Bear Oil, and Wumpsetter. And we have three-year terms. We have two vacancies due to expiring terms. Mr. Davidson and Mr. Huntellas, Huntellas, they are both eligible for reappointment. And that board's been really working well out there. When I've attended their meetings, of course, COVID going on. I haven't gotten out there yet. And so, but as soon as it settles down, I will again start attending. So we do have a new applicant, Seth Rouch, a Wumpsetter. So with that, both, both of these present board members are a great addition to it. Looking at Seth Rouch's stuff, you know, probably would be well too. But I would, since they are, they do have terms available and they haven't termed out, I'd recommend that we, that we appoint Craig Davidson and Gus Huntellas back on the board for another term.
So moved.
We got a motion by Commissioner Shanefield. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Johnson. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. And then we go to Starr.
That would be me, Mr. Chairman.
And that should be easy.
Yeah, it is. Jeannie Demus, currently on the board, serves as chairman, does a great job. She's our only choice. And even if she wasn't, I would recommend for eligibility of reappointment.
Okay. Is that a motion?
Yep.
Okay, we have a motion to reappoint her. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a second by Commissioner Shanefield. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. All right, now, let's go back to the museum board. And...
Mr. Chairman?
Go ahead, Mr. Shanefield. There we go.
I appreciate Commissioner Johnson bringing that up. It, it looks like Jennifer Willmety, although the application wasn't included in the original packet, she's extremely involved in the community. And I would like to change my opinion. I think that she would do a great job on this board.
Thank you, Commissioner Shanefield. Commissioners, any other comments regarding the one position? Whether Ian Parker or Jenny Willmety?
I, I think that was a motion by Lauren, and I'd second that motion.
All right, there's a motion by Commissioner Shanefield, a second by Commissioner Johnson to appoint Jennifer Willmety to the museum board. All those in favor. Any further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Okay, I believe.
Chairman, can I hurry and say one quick thing about the appointments?
Sure.
I just think we missed, just as we were going through, I just wanted to thank Patsy Moody and Terry Lee for their long-term involvement in the board of PNC. I think they've done a great job, and I know that Mr. Lee served as chairman over the past year and during his first chairmanship was through the, the Love's process. And I just think I wanted to give them some recognition for their work.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. And you know what? I'm glad you brought that up, because going back to Solid Waste District in Eden Valley, James Hoddard served, served several, served several terms and served as a loyal board member out there. And they went through some hard times the last three or four years in, in closing that open pit. And they worked with their community people to keep extending the closure of that pit and getting things in place to accommodate people out there. So I want to extend a thank you to James Hoddard as well for his work. So I thank you for bringing that up, Commissioner Lloyd, and give me an opportunity to thank that board member as well. Anybody else? Yes, Mr. Johnson?
I appreciate what Roy did. I was negligent. Roy, you're right on. They did a standing job. It's a difficult job. And I also would like to thank them for that. They did a great job.
Yeah, sometimes. You're exactly right, Commissioner Johnson, and all the rest of the commissioners, sometimes even myself gets involved with the job gets to thank the people that have made a difference in this county. And I'm so glad that you guys are on top of it, so we can take a moment to do that. Okay, anything else regarding the board appointments, commissioners? Okay, let's move on to tab O, which is, I put down continued budget discussion. And I put that on the agenda, commissioners, because as we worked through the previous budget hearings and stuff, I was hearing things, and I thought, you know, they, they certainly, certainly had value to bring forth to either discuss at this time or put on the future agenda to discuss if we as a commission wanted to. And of course, I've got one, two, three, four, five, six things that I've heard over the past that I'd like to bring into play here. And I'll start out with the first one is, in the past budget session, there was not a lot of conversation, but a mention of, of a hiring freeze. And I want to bring that back around to this commission and see what your thoughts are. Is that's an arena we want to have a discussion at this point and, and see where we'd like to be at this point in time. So I'll open the floor for that.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Johnson?
Yeah, I believe I made that comment, and I, I'd like to modify my comment a little bit. I still think we should have a hiring freeze, but I think there, there could be positions that are critical. For example, in the sheriff's department or something like that, that we may want to have some, some wording in there that there would, might be exceptions if the commission decides to go that route. But I, I still feel that we should have a freeze on it. And so that's, that, those are my comments.
Freeze with modifications?
Freeze with possible modification.
Possible modification. Very good. Let's go, go ahead. Commissioner Lloyd, your thoughts?
I would agree with what Commissioner Johnson said. I, my concern is there are some positions we have that are mandated and required. And I think as we, we look at each position, you know, I guess the term I, I, you know, with modifications is critically analyze the exact need of each, of each position of what we need to do. Because there may be some positions, and I think the example of the sheriff's department, we were mandated by certain numbers we have to have in the detention center and on patrol at a time. We need to make sure we're cognizant of that as we move forward with those decisions.
Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. Commissioner Smith?
I'd agree with both of my fellow commissioners and their comments. And yeah, I think that absolutely making sure that we're looking at every position that we're hiring for. Is it necessary? Is it essential at this time is important. So I would, I would concur with that.
Thank you, Commissioner Shanefield.
I agree. I think that this is the time to send the message too, to all of our perma heads and elected officials, that we really need to buckle down. And I think that this goes right along with that and knowing that there are some essential positions that we will not be able to cut. But I think this is the right thing to do right now.
Okay, well, I wouldn't have put it on there. Well, I would put it on there. You wanted to, I agree with you wholeheartedly. So I, I think there's general consensus with, you know, possible... So I I think there's general consensus with, you know, possible modifications as Commissioner Johnson. It's good wording. I see Mr. McLean is on as well as John Deleon. Gary, are you on?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Did you hear that conversation?
I did.
Is there an opportunity or is there a possibility that you could work with John Deleon as well as I believe Commissioner Johnson years later on?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, regarding that issue. Two things I would bring to your attention. Number one is the current practice is every vacancy is brought before the board for formal action. And the board actually signs approval of that. We've been doing that for some time. So there already is a current process. If the board wishes a resolution, you know, stating kind of your collective position on that, we could certainly have a resolution for the next board. But what I'm hearing, I think, is that the board just wants to to analyze this as well as possible. So I guess primarily we're providing the cost information regarding the positions. And so if there's other supplementary information the board would like when we bring forth a vacancy, we'd be happy to to do that as well. If we need to do some groundwork or research or what have you, we'd be happy to bring that with the position request form.
Okay, thank you, Gary. I I I I sense exactly what you're saying and follow the process. And I believe we are in a position to approve. But I think in these times of what's happening today and what could be happening in the future, you know, it might be a little stronger message for the public that we are paying better attention as stewards of our taxpaying dollars, but coming out with a resolution that exemplifies what we believe. So I just me, I'm only one, but I I believe I think we need to come out with a stronger statement to let our taxpayers know that in this time where money's tight, we watch the dollars where they go and that type of thing. And that's just my thoughts. Other commissioners?
Yeah, I I've got another thought. I was gonna save it for under other, but I'll make it now because it's apropos for what we're discussing. What I'm continuing to hear from the Toronto patch is the the furloughs and possible layoffs. And I'm getting that from the employees that are working out there. And so I I think your your point's right on is that we need to send the message to those people that are coming, for example, from the Toronto patch that are paying taxes and we're talking about their money that that we should do the same. I think we need to make, I think the process is in place for us to do that. But I I think a stronger statement is in line to let the people we serve and the ones that are paying the bills need to understand that we're looking at.
Thank you. Okay, so any other commissioner wish to chime in or have any say or can we? Go ahead.
Yeah, what's a comment from me, Chairman Johnson, is I would agree with both of you and say, I know it's tough times, but I encourage each department head, elected official, to really dig deep and really take a look at what we really need. And, you know, running a business, a small nonprofit, sometimes easiest way to deal with situations is I always joke about throwing an employee at it. And we're at a time where that we need to analyze every position as they become open. Is there ways we can conjunct positions? And I know that Commissioner Johnson has talked about the consolidation of positions. And there might be some departments where we're at that point, but I just encourage it. We take a real systematic look at every position and say, how can we move forward in efficiencies in those things? Because one of the things I fear for is this year is tight, but I believe next year will be significantly tighter. And I think we need to be prepared and be able to have those tough conversations and look at solutions and efficiencies out there at a higher level.
Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. Anybody else would like to say anything regarding that? I'll have one comment. You brought up something very important is the consolidation of of work within the departments, within the elected arenas. I think that consolidation of work or, you know, making sure efficiency in that all takes place is something that I gotta give Gary credit for because we talk about it all the time, is the possibility of working with our other leaders in the county, i.e. cities and that to to determine, hey, do we all need the same services? Is there a way we can work together to provide the same services with people? So the consolidation of services is something that really gets home with me, especially being an educator and taking a look across the state, seeing small districts or the state not taking that opportunity to consolidate when there are those opportunities available. So I I'm big believer in consolidation with shared services, if it's possible, when it's possible. So along with that, Gary, I think I think a resolution will be in place. You fill that forward and go ahead. Any other conversation?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to build on something that Wally said, just to make sure, Mr. Johnson said, to make sure that, because not everybody's been in the stakeholder meetings. But just to share with you, the 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 Toronto industry has a trade group who gathers information for the whole industry and the whole in aggregate. And through the stakeholder meetings, they've shared with us that their sales have been off thirty eight percent. And, you know, they're looking at longer term. Traditionally, that industry has come back in six months. They're looking at two to, you know, you know, a couple of years to be back to where they were. And so that's significant. So I just wanted to put some numbers to what Commissioner Johnson is hearing adagotally from the folks running those companies.
Thank you, Gary. And you're right on because I've been in on those industry calls. That's the message coming from them and we're very attuned to following that. So thank you very much. The other thing that comes under a hiring freeze, commissioners, have you thought about? A while back, we authorized the opening and search for three positions, one in planning zoning and two in the clerk courts office. We moved into a salary or into a hiring freeze at those positions. What's your thought about those positions?
Doc, I can't really hear you. I don't know if you moved away from the microphone, but I can't hear you.
Did everybody else hear me?
Will you repeat a talk?
Yeah, I'll repeat it. I said a while back when we talked about a hiring freeze, within the last month, we approved the advertising of two positions, one two in the clerk courts and one in planning zoning for public works for Mr. Gerstie Assistant in there. Do we want to look at those again? Or does the commission feel comfortable moving forward and not including those as part of the hiring freeze?
All right, seems seems to me, Mr. Chairman, that what we've done retroactively, we there's no sense in looking back. I think we should move forward with what with what with what we're doing today.
Thank you, Commissioner. Other commissioners?
Mr. Chairman, I think we'd we'd have the opportunity when they are presented to us in our board meeting as well, if we have concerns then that we could not approve those positions to be filled. So currently, I I think that like Commissioner Johnson, that looking back is probably not the right way, but looking forward. But if we were and had some desire later on, we still have a an avenue of remedy if we like.
Very good. Thank you. Thank you. Other commissioners? Okay. The other thing that I heard in our budget sessions for the next item is salary freezes. And of course, here now, just thought that I'd bring that to the floor and see what commissioners thought at the end. Is that a topic for future discussions or is it not a topic at all?
Again, I was probably the one that said that and what I would, the way I said that is I think we should freeze salaries and wages at this point in time. And if you believe what you're hearing out of Washington, which I most of the time don't believe, is things are going to get better later in the in the financial picture of the of the country that at a later date, we surely could come forward with some kind of a bonus or something like that if we should be so inclined. But I think for the, again, in the interest of sending the right miss- message to the people that are paying the bill, I think we should, we should do that.
And and you can, thank you, Commissioner Johnson. You said a very key key thing that I probably should have said at the very beginning is, you know, these measures and steps that if we choose to take them as a commission, they are only in place until we feel that we're in a position to take them off. You know, I I'd like to use the word temporary, short term, but what's that definition in the present situation? We talk to people in the Toronto field, they're talking anywhere from six to eight quarters, which is a year and a half to two years before their economy gets going. Gas, who knows? Sales tax and that type of thing. So just keep in mind that I truly believe anything we talk about, we're we we have at any point in time can pull back based on what we feel the economy is at that time. So thoughts on the salary freezes? Lauren, your thoughts?
No, I think that, again, it it sends the right message. We're trying to be frugal everywhere else. I do have some concern about some of the salaries that we have had recent discussion on in if we need to make changes to any of those that maybe we should, we need to revisit those and that probably needs to be done in executive session also.
Exactly.
Yeah, Lauren, I, when I made that comment, I I did make that caveat. We needed to revisit those.
We did. Thank you, Commissioner.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Lloyd?
Yeah, I I have a couple of thoughts. Number one, I think as a whole, we do need to look at potential salary freeze. I do worry about that a little bit though, because, you know, not to belabor a point I've made, but we finally got the salary structure thing that we we had committed to as a group to looking seventy five percentile of the employees. And when I know this probably isn't the time due to our economics, but I do struggle a little bit that we were able to raise ten of our key employees, but not the rest of those people that would have been affected by that salary study. And I and I and I I worry about the message and I want to protect the taxpayer money and make sure we send a message to them that we're protecting our money. But I also think we need to send a message to our employees that they're, no matter where they're at in the in the scheme of the rankings, that they are important. And I think the fact that that's been, that study was delayed for a point of time puts us in a bind and and looking at that. And I think that's something we need to have serious discussion about. And then look at the salary freeze. I also I also think maybe as we look forward in the future, and when we have our reserves, you know, we came into this budget session with, depending on the number, thirty nine to thirty seven million dollars in reserves. Do we need to start looking at doing some earmarking to those reserves? Do we need to maybe start looking at a a concept of out of that thirty nine million dollars in reserves that as we go through, hey, we have some extra money, we're going to put this into an employee relief fund. So if there ever was a year that was rough, we might be able to, from what we've saved in the past, have an earmarked amount to maybe look at stuff like bonuses and such like that during those points of time. And and I also see that as something we could use if we want big projects. There could be a building fund. There could be some ways. So I think getting creative in how we allot those our resources and our reserves could also be a beneficial move down the road. I don't think they're at that point, but I do think that's something we need to start actively looking at.
Thank you, Commissioner Lloyd. With regard to reserves, I mean, I had that on my list. Basically came underneath reorganizing our present reserves and we'll get to that at another time towards the end of this. And and then doing a workshop with Rob to determine what is the level of reserves we need to have that need to protect. And we'll, you know, so that, because we have cash carryover issues and that type of thing that the reserves cover. So everything you're saying is right on. So the salary freeze, let's go back.
Will you say that again, Chairman Wenley?
I I would say. Yeah, the organizing, yeah, the reserves, I have that later as one of the options to talk about to reorganize the reserves based on what's in our budget book. Because and I'll go over those here in a little bit. I'll have Bonnie will pull those up so we can see them on the screen and share them when I get to it, okay? But you're right on. We, our next meeting or two, we've got to get Rob Slaughter in and determine what level of reserves we're going to allow ourselves in the future to draw down to. Because reserves are a big part of everything we're doing. So does that make sense to you? All right. So with that, moving on with salary freeze on and that I believe there is a way to take care of working with that salary schedule or salary study. And find for the future and we'll talk about that at a later time.
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Yeah, just to make a quick note so that we have some numbers in mind. So from just a step increase standpoint, those are years of service-based increases. That's roughly a hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And then total in- increase over last in terms of employment is about four eighty seven. Those are step increases, increase in health insurance, promotions in areas. For example, you'll have law enforcement officers going from basic to advanced, advanced to professional. So that increase is about four eighty seven. So that everybody has some talking points regarding your comments.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Gary. Commissioner Smith? Not anything along salary freezing. Nothing? Okay, so I I think I'm hearing it's a general that we do need to consider, look at salary freezes for this budget and what that particular may be like. May take more discussion than we have today. But it could be for the next agenda, talk with salary freezes, Gary, and that type of thing built in with the numbers that you gave us. Would any commissioner disagree with that? Okay, we'll put it on the agenda for the next board meeting. Third thing I have is a while back, we asked, Bonnie was asked to look at the budget and run a comb through it, for lack of better words. And she sent those results out to commissioners that requested it. And we all got a copy of it. It was a list that had a column in it that looked at all the budgets from the experience over the years. And I think Jeff, that request came from us more so than anything, but we all got a copy of it. What's your thoughts, commissioners? Jeff, start with you of moving forward, looking at that list. Do you recall getting it?
Yes, I I appreciate Bonnie's work there and I I think that we're somewhat in agreement of where we're going and what we're doing from here forward. So I don't, I don't know that we need to make any changes to what has been discussed and proposed. I'm not, I'll certainly open that up to any other commissioners' thoughts as well.
Yeah, the reason I bring it up, you know, the work that was done, requested by us for the budget and I, you know, I I just really think you know, it's, we need to decide if we're going to look at it and as we move along or whatever, what are we going to use it for? So thank you, Jeff. Roy, your thoughts?
Can I have a second? I'm marinating.
All right, always. Lauren?
I'm with Roy. Give me a second.
We're looking for the email that you got it, aren't you?
No, I had, I actually had reviewed it. We didn't review it at the last meeting, but it was sent out before the last meeting. And so I had reviewed it and I had it up and saved. Yeah.
Okay, well, I just want to make sure everybody has it. Wally, Commissioner Johnson, did you get it? Do you recall?
Yeah, I've got it. I'm vegetating.
All right, let's, I guess I we can set it aside. It's just discussion items to see if we want to move forward on it. So we'll do that. The other thing I I wanted to make sure it was been brought up in the past too is is this a time to our surplus assets, our buildings. I know that Um, I know that, uh, out of jeans and, well, then we've been working somewhat to try and get some prices together or. Work a contract, I was wondering if, uh, if we wanted to continue to move forward with that and start actively getting our. Buildings up, uh, our surplus up for sale, buildings mainly.
You're talking, uh, Mister Chairman, you're talking about our slur- surplus buildings?
Yes, yes.
My personal thing is you can put them up for sale all you want, I'm personally in that business a little bit and. So, uh, it's gonna cost you for a sign is what it's gonna cost you.
Yeah, I know, and I know it'll cost us for a sign and that type of thing. Are we, are we hanging on to them, my, you know, at a time like this where. Where there's quite a cost going into to keep them up, whether it's utilities, whether it's manpower to. Take care of them, check them and that type of thing, you wanna continue it or do you wanna actively? Keep getting rid of them, you know?
Well, I, I personally have no problem with getting rid of them, that was our plan is to generate some income there, but I. And surely one way we do it is, we may have a piece of property that is, someone might have their eye on it, would be very interested in it. Uh, but you're not gonna get a premium price in my opinion for anything, but, uh. If the majority of the commission wants to go forward with it, I surely will join, join that, uh, that move, because I think we. Basically have done at this point in time, what we intended to do is to, uh, put them up for sale.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, not get a premium price for it, I agree, totally agree. Commissioners, other commissioners, one, thoughts moving forward?
Mister Chairman?
Yes.
I agree with the premium price, however, us sitting on buildings that are vacant is also, I mean, it's gonna be a continued. Cost to the county, so I think why not put them on the market and if we are able to sell them, then. I think that's a good thing, if not, which the market is very slow right now, then I don't think it's doing any harm.
Thank you. Mister Lloyd?
I'd agree with Commissioner Shanfield that, um, I, I, with the market right now, buildings are taking a building in. A beating and I just don't think we'll see a premium price, but I do, I believe we can't fish a, you can't catch a fish unless you throw out a line. And I am, and I think we need to put that out there and see, and we do have the ability to look at every offer, determine if it's a fair offer and. And also e- evaluate and analyze if the cost savings to upkeep of the building and the utilities of those building. Maybe an offer would be fair based upon the long-term savings, and I think that's something we can analyze with each offer, but we can't get an offer unless they're out. And I think we need to be realistic, that we may not get an offer for a while, but it's worth it, but I believe we need to cast that net.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner Smith?
I agree with Roy, I think that, uh, putting them out there and, you know, it might not happen right now, it's not a great environment to do it, but, uh. You can't catch fish unless you got your line wet, so, uh, let us, we put them out there, we'll have, we'll have no idea.
Thank you.
Or if you don't know where Jeff Smith's secret fishing spot is.
Mister, Mister Chairman, uh, the, uh, I, I, what I'd suggest is listening to, I think we're unanimous. On, on what we want to do is to, we've got that facilities committee together and, uh. And we've got a Realtor that we're talking to, and I think we just give direction to that, uh, that committee to, to go forward with it and, uh. The, the key thing, the key problem they're gonna have is to put an asking price on it, but that's their problem if we assign it to them.
I agree.
So I, I think, uh, that would be the way, if, if we're all in agreement to. To go forward with it is put it back in the hands of that same committee that, and see what, what, they come up with.
I agree with you, and I think that committee has been waiting to get an official charge to get it done. And that type of thing, and I think if we set the tone for that right now, um, that type of thing, so I might ask this question. John, you're on, does it take a motion to put those buildings up and name them, or do we just direct the facilities committee to do it and they come back to us?
I think that, um, it's being assigned, I think it is appropriate to. Um, have a motion to, uh, as Commissioner Johnson identified, assign that to. The, um, Realtor that will be handling that, uh, process.
Alright, so with that, I would say I would entertain a motion that the, uh. Facilities committee works with and, uh. Realtor and gets the surplus buildings for sale, those buildings would be the. Old hospitals, I believe that's C Street. The, uh, help me out a little bit, Commissioner Johnson?
I, again, I think what, I put that in the hands of the committee also is to, to identify those that are. For example, we can't move the people out of the, uh, we can't move Mike out of his building yet, we surely can put it up for sale however.
Yes.
If we get an offer, but I, I would put that back in the hands of the, of the committee to come with that, and I think. One thing we, I think we should give direction to is, we retained a Blaine tape to give us a walkthrough, uh. Appraisal of those buildings, so I, I would think that that's given, that Blaine would be the one we would carry forth with. And, uh, and just let them come forward with it and identify those buildings, and at that point, I think, and. Basically what I think John is saying is that maybe a motion would be in line then, because yet we have to identify those buildings. Uh, maybe not by, uh. Meets and bounds or anything like that, but just an a- address on them and, uh, bring it back to us and, uh, and at that point in time, uh. Quick, go forward with a motion.
Very good, okay, so, well, is, uh, you work with that, uh, facilities committee, Commissioner Johnson?
Yes, I surely will.
Would you carry the message to them, please, and get the ball rolling?
I surely will.
John will take that?
I, I agree, what, that, uh, a motion will transpire before action is completed, so I think that's a, a good suggestion by, uh, the commissioner.
Thank you, Gary, you act like you have something to say.
No, no, I just, uh, I would remind the board that the facilities committee presented the board with a list of property. Um, that we recommended was not needed, uh, due to facility consolidation, reduction of staff and other things. Um, so we can pick those up and come back with the board. I think there's also been some discussions that occurred, uh, early on and since regarding. Um, persons that may be interested in buying the property or the cities that may have some interest in, 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 in doing something with the property. Um, so we can bundle all that up and come back, uh, to the board, um, with that information. Just kind of bring it up to date and, and come back to the board, uh, with, with that, um, update.
Mister Chairman, I'd just like to answer Gary's, uh, what Gary's saying there and caution, uh, that committee. It's, it's, it's pretty easy to give something away, and I think there were some, uh. Preliminary proposals made that were along those lines, but I, I think there's nothing wrong with. Giving us that information, but I would send no signals to any of those people at this point in time. Uh, this, this has gotta be arms-length as far as I'm concerned.
Thank you.
Mister Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Shanfield?
I also wanna, um, share with, uh, SCDC has a couple of business leads that are looking for. Potential buildings, um, throughout our community, and so, um, in, in working with the Wyoming Business Council on, on. Some of these leads, there also, there's some interest in some of the buildings that we have, so I think that that's a plus and there's been no mention of. Giving them away or, or anything below market price, so that's a good thing.
Thank you, thank you, Lauren.
Uh, Commissioner Shanfield, uh, Eric is on that committee on the facilities committee.
Good. Okay, so we'll, we'll continue to move forward with that, uh, and, uh, two other things left, um. Uh, if Bonnie's out there, Bonnie, will you put up the, uh, reserves on our budget, please? How's organized? This is basically from last year's budget.
Sure. These, this is the list of reserves from, um, the budget that was approved last year.
Okay, um, and as I, Commissioner Green, I put that on there because. It would take an action as you look through the list of reserves, which we see every time the, uh, budget book comes out, uh. You can see a number of, uh, itemized, I call them itemized or line items for reserves and, and, uh. They've been that way for a number of years and I think for all the right reasons, but yet. I think some of these, uh, reserve line items have been there and, uh. I've asked some questions whether they can be condensed. And so our reserves are, uh, reflective of true reserves versus line items of reserves. And, uh, my question to the commissioners is, would you entertain, uh, looking at these to consolidate them? Um, into, uh, a more, uh, less. Sign for lines, for example, you see a reserve for election equipment. Um, the state now pays for election equipment and that type of thing, uh. If we were to eliminate that line item or any of the other ones that could have been reserved, we know that at any point in time if something. Is needed, we can do a budget amendment for anything in that line item. Um, and that type of thing, so that was an example, the other thing is we take a look at the fiscal year two thousand and eleven. Reserves and, and that, which is floating along, um, from that year. What is a combination of, I believe, the previous year, right, Bonnie?
Yeah, you can actually, if you want to, you can combine all of them into one and just call it a general operating reserve, you can do whatever you want with them. These are just, uh, these were all designated for different things in the past and, uh. It just takes a motion to have them changed and there hasn't been one, um, that's why this list just looks. Um, a little bit overwhelming, I think, um. Yeah, but, uh, yeah, as commissioners have changed, um, priorities have changed, so, um, this can, this reserve list can look like. Whatever you want it to look like, uh, we don't have to have things reserved, um, specifically for these items, we can keep. The ones that you want, uh, we can start over, we can do whatever the commission wants to do with them, we just need a motion to do it.
Bonnie, my question is, is there any one of those reserves that cannot, that has to remain there standalone, i.e. it might be part of a special purpose?
No, they, there aren't any of them that have to be on there. None of them are from special taxes or from anything that require them to be left alone, that are required for that specific purpose.
So that was one of the other things to bring on, listen to, in the budget, I brought that up at, uh, one of our budget workshops, look at reserves. As how they were listed and felt they could be combined and, uh, found out that the only way that can be is through a motion. And for us to work through it, so would, uh, commissioners like to do that at a future meeting or? What's your point?
Mister Chairman, I, I hear what, what Bonnie's saying, uh, and no doubt she's probably right. Uh, but I, I think I'd like to give some thought as to what the ramifications of that might be. On the surface, I think she's right, why, why, why do we worry about a line item, also we need to know is. What those reserve, total of those reserves were, so. But I, I, I'd like to give that some thought and talk to some people about that.
Sounds good, that's why I brought it up, to see if it was, you know, for some proof to bond, uh. Commissioner Smith, your thoughts?
I'd agree, it looks, uh, again, on the surface, excellent idea to combine them, but. Yeah, let's not be hasty and make a mistake, so it'd be difficult, I guess, to put them all back out, so let's just hang on for another meeting.
Alright, Roy?
I would agree, and, um, and it gives us time to think through, because I, I, I mean, like I had stated, I. I do think there are some subcategories we should look at, like a employee relief fund, things like that. Um, if we're looking at building buildings, maybe a building development fund, but I think we can minimize it significantly. But I also want to look and make sure there's no ramifications from these changes, and if we're gonna make changes, to do it in the most effective way.
Thank you, Commissioner Shanfield?
I agree, um, with what Commissioner Lloyd said, and I think that that kind of goes along with our strategic planning, um, and moving forward with. Uh, budget planning and everything else, so I, yeah, I would like one more time.
Very good. Bonnie, can we, uh, put it on for a future meeting to address?
Yes, that's fine, you can address this at any, at any meeting, it just has to be done in a motion. Um, so you can do it at any time of the year, it's just for the, we're gonna have the public hearing for the budget at the next meeting. And the resolution will be approved then, so this list will look similar, um, without a motion to change anything. So just know that on Thursday, you'll see a list somewhat similar to this, um, because no motion has been made to change it. So, but it's not gonna affect anything, you can change it at any point in time, it just won't be on the resolution you're gonna see on Thursday.
Yeah, it was just one of the things I heard about and I thought, let's see where we can go with it, to get it on the agenda if we can. Okay, we'll put it on our future agenda, thank you, uh, commissioners, you're okay with that? And then the last thing I brought up, that I put on my list and, and I think it's, uh, now's a good time to determine it following the, uh. What's going on through, uh, with COVID and, uh, what's happening throughout the state. And what we're faced as a county, as a, um, commission. And that is, uh, to look at, uh, and have a conversation of the Lagoon Road Project. Of, do we, uh. Want to, because we know we're taking that money out of reserves, I know at one time the funding was. Uh, borrow ten million or twelve and take the rest out of reserves and we come back and find out we couldn't get a loan, so we're. Looking at building project now of twenty-two million, um, that may be a little hard hit on our reserves. Um, another option is a single, one of the buildings only, which will put a hit on our reserve, we saw a hit on our reserve from. Um, our financial standpoint of this year's budget, uh, projections of moving forward when you. Parallel with the state, some of the stuff we already hearing this morning, plus there's stuff we're hearing that, uh, has not been publicized with industry. Um, I just think it's, uh. The process or the building's at, where they, uh, are just fine tuning, getting ready to go out for bids, if we're gonna. If the commission were to decide to pause it for a period of time. And revisit it again as the economy gets better, this is a better time to do it than, uh, any other time, so I. Think it's a good time to bring it up, to use the commission, and I, and I think the discussion or the idea is. Do we wanna pause the Lagoon Project? For now and revisit it, uh, every, so often to see where we're at economy-wise or. Continue, uh, moving forward, which means, uh, at this point in time, until we find funding, if there's not any available, it'll. It'll all come out of reserves, so with that, I'll open the floor up to you as fellow commissioners for your thoughts of, uh. Pausing the project or moving forward based on, uh, the economy.
Mister Chairman?
Right, Mr. Grant?
Uh, I thought we made that decision, and the decision was, is that we are gonna get these bids and we're gonna have a bid for each of the. Buildings independently or over for both buildings, and at that point in time, which will, and those bids will be in in next month. And at that point in time, we'd make that decision, whether gonna build one, both or none, and I, I think. That decision has been made and we need that information before, at least I need that information before I can. Intelligently make a decision as to what I think the county should do. And, uh, I, I'd like to see those bids, and the reason I'd like to see those bids is I think the contractors. In Sweetwater County or e- even in the state of Wyoming are very hungry to get those, those, uh, that. That work, and one of the things that I think we need to consider when we make that decision is. To stimulate the economy within Sweetwater County and keep our people working, that, that's what they're looking at with the. With, in, in Washington for this very thing with infrastructure, with our high roads and highways. And I think we have to do the same thing, the key to get, get us out of the slump that we're in is. It, in, in the economy is to have jobs, and I think we need, that has to be in the equation when we make that decision and I. I can't make that decision personally until I see what those bids are for one building, two buildings or both buildings. We build one building, we, we've, we've at least made, I wouldn't say the word is proper, but possibly wasted already a million dollars. Because of, of the way that the architectural, uh, work has been done, but, but. That's neither here nor there, because your point is well taken, we need to make that decision as, with as much information at our hands. As we can get, and we don't have that at this point in time, part of that. Part of that, I'll refresh your memory, that the reason that we, we're going to fund some of that and do what we're doing with those two buildings. Is that we would have, we would free up the other buildings that we own, that we just discussed, that we're gonna put on the market. To partially pay for those two buildings.
Agreed.
And, and we're jumping off the horse in the middle of the stream, and I don't think we should do that. Let's put that off until those bids come in.
It's just, it's a conversation that's ongoing out there, Commissioner Johnson, and, and it's a fair time to. Make sure we're all on the same page and everything like that. That's why I bring it up. I, you know, job is to represent everybody and, and I. I, I know those bids are out there, but I still think we need to keep our thumb on the barometer or finger. And we need to still be talking with one each other and those conversations need to occur here for each of us to. Think, say what we're thinking. So Commissioner Smith, thank you, Commissioner Johnson.
Hundred percent agree. I, I always say there's not a decision to be made till there's a decision to be made and, and waiting and getting the bids. It's already in the process. Let's, let's find out. Maybe they're, you know, 18 million dollar for both buildings. Maybe, maybe they're 30 million. And we're, and we're, we need to cut. So, so yeah, there's not really no decision to be made until there's a decision to be made. But we do need to tread lightly and make sure that we are making a wise decision, especially since the, the funding has fallen through. This is gonna be a reserves project, 100%, at least that's the way it looks right now. So I'm all for waiting and, and finding out what we find out.
Okay. Need to hear. Is there somebody else? Okay, Commissioner Shainfield?
Mr. Chairman, I am fine with waiting. I think that we should get the bids in so that we do have some final numbers to make a decision around. The fact that the last motion and vote was, is Nolan Boyd. Due to the fact that we weren't able to fund it through the bank, would require a vote anyway in either direction. Right now, I'm leaning towards the conservative approach of, of holding off, but that's my gut instinct and I haven't seen any numbers yet. So.
All right. Thank you very much. Commissioner Lloyd?
Yeah, um, you know, I'm willing to wait for the numbers. My concern is we're freezing salaries and we're gonna build a 22 million dollar building potentially. And I don't know, I feel good with that. I am willing to wait and see the numbers, because I think just right. To make an informed choice, we have to see what the total cost is. The other concern is if we stay in that 18 to 20, even if we got it down to 18 million dollars, we're looking at taking three and a half million dollars out of reserves to cover the budget. 18 plus 3.5, 21. We take down the reserves to 15, 16 million dollars and going into another year, that could be financially rough is very difficult. I do agree with Chairman Johnson that it can help reinvigorate the, the economy. And I do think we need to look at it from that, that aspect. But I'll be very honest and say I'm very cautious about this due to the level. It could take our reserves down. But I don't think there's a decision I can make formally now until we got those bid numbers.
All right, thank you. Well, I think it's a consensus and I, I, I feel the same way, but I'm still gonna bring those things up. For us to have those discussions, because I think it truly gives us an opportunity to hear what each other's saying. Where our thoughts are and that type of thing. And I think, I think it's the way it should be of, for discussions as we move forward. So with that, that was the budget discussion topics that I wrote down based on previous workshops. And we have known this afternoon. With that, there's no more questions regarding to that tab. Yes, Commissioner Shainfield?
I'm sorry to interrupt. I wanted to circle back around to some of the suggestions that Bonnie made. And I think that we have had some of those discussions, but not all of them. And in looking with that, if we're freezing hiring and we're freezing salaries and we're looking at that. I think that we owe it to the taxpayers and we also owe it to our employees to, to maybe dig a little bit deeper. I don't know if any of the individual commissioners have done so on some of these suggestions that she has. There, most of them are, are really logical and things that I think that warrant some conversation around. So that, that's my opinion after some marinating and some further discussion.
Well, thank you for bringing that back, because that's why I brought it in to see what you as other commissioners said when you're thinking, when you saw it. Roy, do you need to marinate on that one a little bit more?
I, I'm ready to move forward in discussion, yeah.
Okay, so I don't know what's the best thing. I don't know if you wanna put it up part of the budget workshop. We have time this afternoon, but it's worth looking at. So.
Mr. Chairman, that was my hope, looking at those, that we'd, we'd be able to revisit a couple of those during the budget workshop today.
Thank you. That's where we'll have it. So everybody have their sheets and that. Okay, anything else? Circle back under what I managed to ruin your good morning on. With that tab. So with that, let's move on to tab P, which is an agenda item we added. And it's a resolution 20 dash 06 GR dash 0 O. It's a coronavirus relief grant. And joining us with that grant application is Ms. Marshall, our grants writer.
Welcome, Christina.
Hello again, Mr. Chairman and Commissioner. So real quick, thanks for adding this under other. Sweetwater County has the opportunity to apply for coronavirus relief grant funding. From the Office of State Lands and Investments. This is part of that famous CARES Act awarded to the state of Wyoming in the amount of 1.25 billion dollars. I don't want to give you the impression that we can apply for that amount, but we can certainly apply for a portion. The funding will be awarded on a first come, first served basis, which is why I asked to put this on the agenda today. As opposed to waiting three weeks. So this funding can only be used for necessary expenditures incurred. Due to this health, this public health emergency related to COVID-19. Unfortunately, it cannot replace revenue. It cannot be used for prepayment on contracts or regular payroll. Of permanent employees doing their regular duties. Costs incurred as of March 1st to the end of December 31st could be submitted under this grant proposal. But they cannot be budgeted expenses. So the application became available on Friday. I did send out an email to all the county's elected officials and department heads for contact. Gene Legursky and Tim Knight have been working diligently on a lot of items. And so I'm proposing to submit an application for the following three types of expenses. And again, these have not been budgeted. One, I'm sure you're anxious to get back in your regular meeting room. So it's to do the adaptive reuse of the commissioner's meeting room, including technology, remodeling, wiring. Concrete coring for furniture and so on. Now, the, the exact plans have not been designed yet. But there are some ideas floating around and it would go in front of you in the event we are successful in this grant. The second request, part of the request would be courthouse public health modifications and PPE. So that's some of this plexiglass you see around the doc, the Dropbox, Zoom licenses, masks, sanitizer. Things like that. And then finally, we do have some new people helping out with the, the door attendants getting paid. I'm putting in a request for payroll for 32 weeks. We may not need that for that long. But that would go from the time they started until December. So that total request would be 240,085. And I just want to point out one important thing is in the, the resolution. I have that this project is for the purpose of protecting the health of the citizens of Sweetwater County. By stopping the spread of coronavirus disease and to facilitate compliance with the COVID-19 related public health measures. Resulting from the COVID-19 public health emergency. So here at the courthouse, that is why this is being called the Sweetwater County. COVID-19 courthouse project. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. And one final note though, besides myself, Tim Knight and Gene Legursky would be listed as contact persons for this project.
Hey, thank you, Christina. Commissioners, any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Johnson.
I think it's no brainer. There's nothing, there's nothing to lose to go forward and, and the only thing, you know, I wanna. We're gonna modify that thing, our seating and arrangements in there. I wanna be as far as I can away from Jeff.
Well, the feeling is mutual then, Commissioner Johnson.
More reason to go forward.
I think the reason to go forward is because it just needs to be. No, that's great. I'll tell you what, I was wondering if we were ever gonna recapture. That 1.25 for all the right reasons, Christina. And I think you and the staff in courthouse have worked diligently. And I know you've contacted elected officials, everybody, and you have a good number. So. Good job. Well done. First come, first served. Soon as I get a chance, I'll get it signed if it's approved. So commissioners, what's your pleasure?
Mr. Chairman.
Your shame, Bill.
Gonna defer to Jeff, but Lauren's fine.
Okay, all right.
You're gonna jump in this, Lauren? Good for you.
Yeah, jumped right in. I would like to make a motion to approve resolution 20 dash 06 dash GR dash 01. For the submission of the coronavirus relief grant application as presented.
And authorize term to sign all documents?
Yes, that's what I meant.
That's what I thought. Is there a second?
I'll second.
Second by Commissioner Smith. Any further discussion? No further discussion. All. Yeah, I got screwed up. Senior moment. Okay, no further discussion. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Oh, same sign. Motion carries. Good job, Christina. With that, go ahead.
No, thank you.
You're welcome. With that, let's go to, to other. And that's for future agendas. Wally, you said you had one, but we covered it earlier. Do you have another one?
Yeah, that's my comment about what's going on in Toronto Patch, because, you know, there's some new terms that we're hearing out there. And I was in labor relations and negotiated those contracts in a lot of instances. The new term is that furlough term. And I think that furlough term is a much better term than layoffs. So. But I, I think we just need to be aware of that. Some of those plants are running much higher, at much higher levels than others. But I think it's, as you recall, I made the comment with, with the governor is that. That when, when times are good, Toronto Patch, 15% of our economy. And, and it's not good, but I think that there, there's a good chance it'll turn, turn around quickly. One of the top people that I had discussions with, I told him what's going on with these riots. And some ways is good for the Toronto Patch, because there's gonna be a lot of glass broken and, and that obviously is where that, that soda ash goes.
Thank you. So that's making lemonade out of lemons?
Trying to.
Okay, good job. Thank you for that. You're right on. As you're saying, anything, other commissioners, anything for other or good of the order? Anything you want on the next agenda?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Shainfield?
I can get with Eric, but I think I would like to have an update on SEDC and how they're doing and the things that they've done since they've moved under the county. I think that it would be a good time to have that.
Okay, so let's make sure we, you visit with Eric and get a, on the agenda for the next time, please. Sally will put it on. Thank you. Anything else, commissioners? Okay, without that, we'll move on. We'll have executive session for legal and personnel. And let's, I'll entertain a motion to go into executive session for legal and personnel. So moved by Commissioner Lloyd. Is there a second, Lauren?
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a, we do, executive session, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. Break first, commissioners, or move forward?
Break.
Break, I thought so. Appreciate that. Break, break.